I'd like to call the July 19th, 2022 meeting of the Buncombe County Commission to Order. Thank you all for being with us this evening. Let's begin our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise and join us in the pledge. In accordance with the Code of Ethics adopted by the Board, all county commissioners have a duty to obey all applicable laws regarding official actions, to uphold the integrity and independence of the office, to avoid impropriety in the exercise of official duties, to faithfully perform the duties of the office, and to conduct the affairs of the governing board in an open and public manner. Are there any items on the agenda, the outcome of which would have a direct, substantial, and readily identifiable financial impact for any Board member? Does any Board member have a financial interest in any public contract coming before the Board today? I would note, we have on the Economic Development Public Hearings, just a couple of things we'll note real quickly. Commissioner Al Whitesides represents the county commissioners on the Board of the Economic Development Coalition, and Commissioner Amanda Edwards represents the Buncombe County Commissioners on the Sports Commission. So we do have public hearings related to county support for those economic development activities. So when we get to those activities, they will be recused from voting on those particular items. All right. But otherwise, all Board members have a duty and obligation to vote on all matters voted on by the county commissioners at our meeting this evening. Commissioners, are there any questions about any items on the consent agenda? Do any members of the public have any questions about any items that are listed on our consent agenda? All right. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda and to follow the remainder of our agenda as it are published? A second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. We now come to public comment. The time limit for individual comment to the Board is three minutes. If your time expires, you can leave any questions along with your name and address and phone number with the county clerk. Board members are not expected to comment during the public comment period. This is the Board's chance to listen to the public. We do have a sign-up sheet of folks who have requested a chance to speak during public comment. It looks like we've got about 16 folks who have signed up. So I'm going to start off by just going through the list of folks who've signed up. If you didn't sign up, we'll ask if any other folks want to address the Board after we get through the folks on the list. So we'll get to anybody who wants to participate in public comment. You'll get an orange light when you've got about 30 seconds left and a red light when your time is up. And we do ask folks to discontinue their public comments once your time's up because we want to give everyone the same amount of time. All right. The first person who signed up is Joe Wilkerson. Hey, good evening.
Good evening, Commissioners. You'll hear from many community members tonight about the urgent need for concrete action on reparations. The most important voices are those of Black citizens who stand to gain or lose the most based on your decisions. Without these voices, our community has no path to moral redemption or equity. And without your courageous commitment, these individuals will have led our path in vain. There is hope here, and it takes a peculiar form. You, as a commission, have an opportunity not only to lead but to be led. You can choose to be led by the Reparations Commission, who know this place and its recent history as no others do. You can choose to be led by listening deeply and long to what the commission has to say, if you have ears to hear. And just as importantly, you can choose to lead. You can lead by committing funds based on the radical idea that those wounded by white supremacist politics know how to heal themselves. You can lead by imagining the example you set for the cities and counties across America who, right now, are pining for an example to follow. You can lead by setting an example for future commissions. And you can lead by responding when approached in good faith and never again taking refuge in ignorance or bureaucratic entanglements. This commission has been blessed with an opportunity to do good and to show future generations, like my kiddo over there, what that can look like. You've been blessed with the Reparations Commission to listen to. And I wonder if you can feel that with me. Can you feel the goodness of being pressed by the difficult questions the Reparations Commission puts to you and will in the future? If not, my invitation is just to be curious about what stands in the way and know that there are those of us out here who believe you can move through it. And if you do feel blessed, and I pray that you do, then you're free. You're free to invest energy into the healing work of the Reparations Commission. Energy means attention. Energy means time building relationships with these dedicated individuals. And energy, as I'm sure you well know, means money. Thank you.
Thank you. The next person that's signed up is Bruce O'Connell. And are there additional folks outside of... Is everyone able to get in the commission chambers or is there an overflow space? Avril Gina, or Lamar? Yes, sir. Okay. Thanks for letting me know. All right. Good evening.
Thank you very much for hearing me. This is my first time here. I'm a little nervous, but I figured I might as well try to get involved. I want to speak about reparations. As a Jewish American, I have experienced prejudice before. So I'm not totally unfamiliar with what the Black community is going through. So I want to start off by saying that. And I'm glad that we, as a community, are doing the right things by having a reparations program. I have no problem with it. But I do think we need to be careful of how this concept is structured and implemented. There's questions about the process that I think need to be addressed, some of which would be what qualifies an entity or a recipient to be able to get reparations? Do I have to be 1/32 African-American or 1/4 African-American? Does my company need to employ a certain number of African-Americans? Can it not employ people that aren't African-Americans to qualify for reparations? Those are very sensitive questions that need to be addressed, I think, before we open up a can of worms. Is there a limit to how many times the same recipient can get reparations? What happens if the reparations are squandered or wasted? Do we then give more to the same entity? Or do we say, "You're now disqualified"? What happens if another group, let's say Native Americans, were to come up and say, "Hey, that's not fair. I think I deserve reparations"? Now, let me say, as a Jewish American, I'm not asking for reparations, even though I could. I mean, we built the pyramids under slavery. The Nazis exterminated almost the entire Jewish population, but I'm not asking for reparations. That being said, I have no problem with the concept. I just want to make sure that two wrongs don't make a right. We've got to make sure that the type of questions I brought up just now and other questions are addressed in discussions. And you know, diversity, inclusion, and equity works both ways. And to avoid a problem down the road, I would like to suggest that you think about the makeup of the reparations committee. When you look at that committee, it needs to represent a broad spectrum of the taxpayers that are going to be footing the bill. And right now, I don't think the makeup of the reparations committee is a fair example of the people that live in Buncombe County. So I believe it's important that diversity work both ways, and there should be diversity on the reparations committee. I would be happy to sit on that committee, and I'm offering myself. So if anybody wants to pick another person that's not African-American to be on the committee, I'm a Jewish American, and I'd be happy to serve. Thank you.
The next person that's signed up is Priscilla Robinson.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm speaking on behalf and support of the reparation. I'm a native of Asheville, North Carolina, born on the South Side. I not only researched the impact of urban renewal, but I lived it. As an African-American, I watched many homeowners lose their homes, business owners lose their businesses. Homeowners were forced to live in public housing. I say that to say there were jobs, especially for the youth. The implementation of urban renewal cut out generational wealth. I'm hoping that your support will reinvest in the community specifically for the youth, create programs, create jobs, help to create sustainable lifestyle. We're not asking for a handout. We're asking for reinvestment. We're asking for a hand up to create sustainable living. And we're asking that you would consider reinvesting and investing in your future employee pool. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next is David Greason. And we'll check back in on David in a few minutes. Next up is Dewayne McAfee. And I apologize in advance if I mispronounce anybody's names.
You've done better than most.
Okay. Thank you.
It's an honor for me to be here today. I am a part of the ad hoc reparations committee, and I was going to come here and stand and talk to you about the good work that we did. But I think my colleagues will be able to handle that. I find it necessary now to talk about what I just heard about reparations. We have varied opinions about what reparations looks like. And I'm having a problem with someone being able to articulate to me exactly what reparations is. For me, it is to undo the injustice of the past. It is trying to level the playing field of systemic racism that has been perpetrated on my ancestors for hundreds of years. The reparations committee that's put in place right now is about the life experiences that have happened as a cause of systemic racism. I find it hard to understand why someone who has not experienced that, in his own words, would want to be a part of that committee. We need people there who do not have an agenda. We need people there who are looking to simply try and to balance the playing field that was unjustly put together long before any of us were born. Reparations is a mighty, mighty obstacle thing for the county, for the community, for this country to overcome. It's difficult. And it's going to take some good-minded, fair-minded people to try to come up with a reasonable solution. I would recommend that anyone that has a predisposed agenda to what they think reparations should be, instead of listening to the facts, you're probably not the type of person that should be on the committee. Fair-mindedness has nothing to do with skin color. Character has nothing to do with skin color. As our leaders, we expect you to be honorable. We demand that you be honorable. And it's time for us to get on the business of doing what's right for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chairman Newman.
Hey. David's here. Yeah. Mr. Greason is here. Coming up, David.
Thank you. Greetings, Commissioners. My name is David Greason. I'm the white accomplice organizer for the Racial Justice Coalition. And I'm here because I see reparations as my responsibility. I moved to Asheville seven years ago, part of a wave of gentrification that I wasn't aware of at the time, that was pushing Black people out of this region. I didn't create that reality, but I still feel like it's my responsibility to address it. You've been asked by the Community Reparations Commission to include a line item in your budget for reparations for Black people in Buncombe County as a percentage of the overall budget in perpetuity. And there are a bunch of us here tonight, many of us in the overflow and watching online to see what your answer to that question is going to be. Now, the safe choice, the political choice, would be to give a kind of muddy answer, to affirm your support of the process and the work of the commission, but not to pin yourselves down to any precise promise of funding. And you can always fall back on the claim that you can't bind, you know, future county commissions, which is true. Of course, future county commissions also aren't bound to fund a sheriff's office or a tax collection department, so technically. But I think what's being asked is that, you know, those things are not considered one-time expenditures. They're considered ongoing county priorities. And I think what's being asked by the Reparations Commission likewise is to make this an ongoing priority. So if you say yes to this request, I want to acknowledge that it's a political risk. But I'm here tonight to encourage you to take that risk, to be bold. Because I think that's why you're here. I don't think people become county commissioners because they're in it for the glory or the glamour. I think you're in it because you really want to serve your community. And your community really needs this leadership right now. There's a lot of folks really wondering whether reparations is going to be a real thing or not. Is it going to just be a performative gesture? Is it going to really deliver in some substantial kind of way? And I think the Reparations Commission's asking you to make this commitment, to show that Buncombe County is not just going to talk the talk, but they're going to walk the walk. Because that will enable them to be empowered to really step up and do the work they need to do. It's going to be a really important move. So like me, you all didn't have a hand in creating the conditions for these harms over all these centuries. But we have a responsibility, I think, to address that harm. It's one I urge you to embrace despite the risks. That's the leadership that's needed. And I believe you are the leaders who can offer it. I believe you can be bold and will be bold, and I hope you prove me right. Thank you.
The next person that's signed up is Debbie Lane.
Good evening, and thank you. I'm Debbie Lane, and it's been my pleasure to be on the ad hoc reappraisal committee since, I think it was last November. You'll hear our committee, members of our committee, speak in a few minutes and give you that comprehensive information that we've spent quite a bit of time on. So I've also had the pleasure and the honor to be on the County Equalization Tax Board. I'm chair of that board and have been on the Board for quite some time, quite a number of years. I think you will hear, when they talk in just a minute, and give you kind of an overlay of what we've done for the past number of months, I think you will see a very positive, very thorough, thoughtful, and good recommendations and good report that we have all put together. It's meant a lot to us, and we're glad to present that to you guys tonight. And one last thing, just as kind of an outsider now looking in as a non-staff, non-political, but a committee member to have been on the Board, I want to take a minute and thank Keith Miller and his staff for the dedication and the thoroughness of their staff and their service to our community. Thanks very much.
Good evening. My name is Jensen Gelfond. I live in West Asheville. I've lived in Asheville since 2008. And just wanted to think about the statistic here of our declining Black population. Back in 2000, 17% of our population was Black. And in 2018, that dropped to 11%. Harm is being done, and people are leaving Asheville and leaving Buncombe County unlikely to return. After 10 years or over 10 years of being here, I'm realizing Asheville isn't always what's on the billboard, especially for Black people. I don't want to live in an all-white town. Diverse populations strengthen our community vibrancy and create a more compelling lived experience for everyone. There is plenty of harm in the past that we all have to atone for, such as land being seized by eminent domain for our highways and our county being named after the prominent slave owner Edward Buncombe, not to mention Woodfin, Patton, McDowell, Baird, Weaver, and many other slave owners that our Black population has to look at on our road signs and everything else on a regular basis. The harm is ongoing. We also have our modern systems of unsafe jails and traditional policing, the impacts of redlining. Black folks have fewer opportunities to create their own home and create more generational wealth. Reparations is going to be the seed for a healing energy in our community. I urge you to listen to our Black leaders. They will guide us through to heal the harm that has been done, bit by bit. It will take a very long time. It will take all of our lives. It will take the lives of our children. But this needs to be done. It was a problem that was created at the founding of our nation, and it is a problem that, if we address, will create healing and wealth for everybody. I urge you to put a line item for reparations into the budget in perpetuity. Thank you.
Is Tim Wallace.
Good evening. My name's Tim Wallace, and there'll be a little change in topic right now. Since I only have three minutes, I'll dive right in. I'm heartened to see the work you guys have done in the past several months on county salaries. But it still appears that there's more work to be done. I looked at one of the departments that I'm familiar with, and the thing that concerned me and that actually did happen is the higher-salary people went up an average of 20% in pay, while the lower-salary people only went up 10%. And that's one of the things you always have to guard against. There are ways that, when you run a project like this, you run it, you look at it, and then you go for a little bit more equity in spreading the money around. And moving a little bit from those higher salaries down to the lower people would have made a tremendous impact on their morale without even affecting the people up above, who went up an average of almost $10,000. They still would have been thrilled with $7,000. So that's one of the things I noticed in looking at the numbers. The other thing was the $1,770 living wage that was reduced to $17. That's 70 cents an hour, which our HR director said was because they are given a two-week paid vacation. 70 cents over 2,080 hours is $40 more than two weeks' pay. So they paid $40 for the benefit of taking two weeks off. There was no paid vacation for someone at $17 an hour. Another thing to look at is, the $1,770 was last year's number. MIT's analysis shows three counties in North Carolina at the top of the living wage now. Henderson County, Madison County, and Buncombe County, all at $19.60. Inflation is really killing us in this county. The last time you gave a raise was based on the inflation of 2020. So the employees have not gotten a raise for 18 months of inflation. That is now totaled 15%. And on July 1st, they got less than 5%. That means they're 10% behind today. Where do you think they'll be at the end of the year? And my bet at the end of the year is we'll be close to 20% because this is just continuing. But I just want to make sure you're all aware of that. It's like squeezing blood out of a turnip, but we've got to find some way to get it out of the turnip. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. The next person that signed up, and I'm sorry, I'm having a little bit of trouble reading the last name, but the first name is Kit, and they're here to speak on reparations.
Howdy. I am Kit Molina-Nawert in Swanonoa. And I want to say, I want to ask you all to support the Reparations Commission's formal request to set aside a percentage of the budget in an ongoing way. $2 million is a laudable start, but there's no amount that could possibly be sufficient or just. Black labor, land, and other resources were used by this country as a capital investment that created wealth for mainly white governments, organizations, institutions, and individuals. So it's time for us, as a community, to repay that debt owed. You helped create and select the Reparations Commission. If you don't approve their formal request, it could be seen as invalidating their authority or power and could have a chilling effect on engagement. So please support the community by supporting the Reparations Commission.
The next person, again, I apologize if I don't get your name quite right. Aslan Sterling.
Yeah. I'm Aslan Sterling in Asheville. I'm here today to urge you to honor the Community Reparations Commission's request that you dedicate a percentage of your budget to reparations in perpetuity. This is a meaningful and necessary step towards racial justice in Buncombe County, and justice will be incomplete for our Black neighbors without it. This is long overdue and must be prioritized right away. Viola Davis recently wrote about the need for reparations, and everything that she had to say reflects my feelings about this issue as well. After centuries of chattel slavery, black codes, sharecropping, oppression, peonage, white supremacy, terror, lynchings, mass murders, exploitation, systemic racism, gerrymandering, Jim Crow, redlining, medical apartheid, the war on drugs, mass incarceration, and the overall destruction of generations of Black lives and families, reparations in the $20 trillion-plus range is necessary and a long overdue step towards the restorative racial justice owed to Black Americans. towards the restorative racial justice owed to black Americans who built this country for free.
The next person that signed up is Karen Cooten.
Hello and thank you for this opportunity to exercise free speech in our democracy. I'm very grateful for this. My name is Karen Cootiv and I first moved to Asheville in 1991. I'm a taxpayer. I'm a homeowner since 2016 and I raised my son here. I am a white woman named Karen who is here to advocate for ongoing reparations. Our nation, our area, we owe a significant debt to the black people who have worked willingly and against their will to create the wealth of our nation. We have seen many destructive forces: slavery, segregation, Jim Crow, lynchings, gentrification, also known as urban renewal, that systematically oppresses black people and destroys black wealth. It is time for us to address this and right these wrongs. Ongoing reparations are needed. I am proud of Asheville and Buncombe County for addressing this and initiating this. I want to be proud of this implementation. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. All right. Next is L. Derek Lewis.
Yes, Derek Lewis. I've been in Nashville for six years with my family. And I'd like to take this moment to thank you guys for the opportunity to speak and congratulate you on your positions as county commissioners. I know that's not an easy job, so I just got to say congratulations. And also, thank you for actually kicking off this reparations opportunity because not every city or county or even state in this country is even dwelling in these waters. So I know it's not easy. Now, thank you for that because it gives me an opportunity to stand in this space and contemplate what would that look like and how would that feel? For most of my life, I had no opportunity to imagine that. Imagine the amount of hope this brings us as black people. It's huge. Imagine what can be done with hope. When we have hope, there's so much more that we can do for our community, for our family, for our own selves. So I want to thank you for that. I am definitely in support of checking that box for this to be something you do in perpetuity. One of the reasons is I think seven generational, seven generations back, and seven generations forward. And when I look back, seven generations, it's not a pretty picture. To even describe some of the things that we've heard spoken about here, it triggers me. It harms me to even speak about the things that have been done to me and my people. And what's intriguing is that it continues today. This is not just what happened 200 years ago. It continues today. So in addition to putting aside funding, I want you to stop this pain and suffering. And the intention there is to bring it to an end through laws and legislation. That's one of the things that I would love to see happen because there's no need to give me money if there are holes in my pocket. There's no need to rise the tide if there's holes in the boat. Let's fix the boat and let's provide the money. And I would say to you, it's complicated. I recognize that. Everybody here recognizes that. Everybody in the world recognizes that. Just speaking about reparations, every person you speak to has a different perspective. Who gets the money? What are you needed for? What are you going to do with the money? Who deserves it? Who doesn't? It's not for you to figure out. You dynamically created a reparations commission. Thank you for doing that. Because that puts the onus on the community because they're going to reach out to the black people in this community and figure this out. So to me, you have the easy job. Check the box, provide the money, and let us do the rest.
Thank you very much. All right. The next person is Stephanie Phillips.
Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you for your service to the community. Never try to rewrite your three-minute public comment a minute before you go on. Several weeks ago, I gave invitations to all of Western Carolina, where my family goes back six generations to consider putting International World Peace Day on your calendars and celebrating it. In addition, the surrounding counties of our nation's capital and DC were invited, where my family has longstanding ties and has lived many years. Also, the entire state of Florida, our retirement capital of our elders, were all invited to consider participating. An excerpt from Memorial Day weekend in Berkeley County public comments said that "I was there to honor all military service members and their families from every country around the world for their sacrifice." Is there a historian or actuary who could estimate how many lives have been lost since the beginning of time, fighting over things like religion, natural resources, treasures, rebuilding contracts? And sadly, population control, every generation asks, "Are we better off than our parents?" For the first time in modern history, many are answering no and they and their parents are seriously considering about bringing new life onto the planet. By celebrating this day, especially in and around our nation's capital, it will greatly help in terms of national security. I can provide some names and contact numbers for some of the leadership in some of these other regions if you would like to coordinate with them. Washington County, Maryland, has a Citizens Emergency Preparedness Day the weekend before and a Women's Expo, which is quite complimentary, having preparations and organizations well-planned and coordinated with their neighbors. You know, if just one community decides to celebrate it, or a few communities decide to celebrate it, one day, or a whole week, the weekend before, the weekend after, and the weekend between, sharing a meal, quality entertainment, making amends, love your family, neighbor, planet, longstanding fuse, North and South, black and white, Catholic, Protestant, Communist, Capitalists, Hatfields and McCoys may learn to get along and coexist. Thank you for your consideration.
All right, thank you. The next person is Nina Tovish.
Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you this evening. I'm actually here with two points. The first, having to do with the Reparations Commission. It's been my privilege and honor to attend many of the Commission meetings. I am struck by the excellence of the participants who are engaged in this challenging and deeply meaningful and important work. They deserve the support of this community, not just with words, but with funds. I strongly urge you to add a percentage of the budget as a line item going forward to support the work of the Reparations Commission. The second part of my comment has an equity component as well. And that has to do with how properties in Buncombe County are appraised, evaluated, assessed, and then subsequently taxed. I urge you to invite Joe Minicozzi and his Urban Three group to make a public presentation before this Commission about his study of the inequities that are built in to the tax assessment process currently. And this has not only implication for individual taxpayers and the way that they may be overpaying while the wealthiest among us are underpaying, it also has implications for decisions that are made at the governmental level about things like land use incentive grants. Land use incentive grants lock in tax rebates for a period of years and meanwhile, the underlying value of the property is assessed often very lowly and that stays in place, allowing another person to come in and acquire that property. While the value goes up on a market basis, they still benefit from the complete tax abatement. This is deeply unfair and other taxpayers in the community end up carrying the load for those properties and it also means that the entity, whether it's the city of Asheville or whether it's the county who's doing that grant, does not receive the commensurate tax benefits of the value of the appreciation of the property. This is not a good way to do business. So let me ask you to embrace the findings put forward by Urban Three and revise the way that county assessment is done so that we have an outcome that is truly equitable and that provides a tax income stream that is appropriate. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And the next speaker is Joe Minicozzi.
Good evening, Chairman Newman, honored members of Buncombe County Commission. My name is Joe Minicozzi. I didn't plan that last one, sorry. I'm the principal owner of the consulting firm called Urban Three. We're founded in Buncombe County more than 10 years ago and been proud to make this county our headquarters. We have worked in over 150 cities across 41 states to help local leaders gain better understanding of their community's finances. Over a year ago, Urban Three found deep disparities in the way that Buncombe County assesses property value. We brought the evidence to you to clearly demonstrate the repeated systemic over-assessment of lower-valued properties. Simply put, this is a trend that has been placed an unfair burden on lower-income households and residents, and particularly those of color. This has been going on for decades and it continues today. We appreciated the time and expertise donated by the members of the Ad-Hoc Committee, who we will hear from this evening, but regrettably, our concerns were not addressed by the committee nor the county staff. At Urban Three, we hold ourselves to the highest level of professional standard of integrity and transparency. To that end, we provided your staff with an unfettered access of our analysis approach, sources of data, and our entire research team. Rather than giving the committee complete access to our findings, your staff instead engaged in a campaign to, number one, preemptively and inappropriately discredit the integrity and relevance of our work, and, number two, present a review of the assessment process that neither aligns with industry standards or your own staff's definitions of appropriate performance measurement. Surprisingly, after all this was done, your staff reviewed our work and determined our analysis and approach, and therefore, the evidence we shared with you last year, was in fact sound and conducted in according to international standards of best practice. To be clear, we are not your consultants. We are your constituents. And we raise these concerns about how our services administered by Buncombe County are deepening the racial divides in our community and knowingly causing financial harm to households least able to withstand it. I hope as Commissioners, you will not allow this to become a template for how equity concerns are addressed moving forward. Two years ago, Buncombe County earned national praise for being among the first local governments in the entire country to pass a resolution recognizing the damage systemic racism and inequality and demanded reparative solutions to address this damage. The conduct of your staff and lack of accountability over the last year, especially when presented with clear opportunity to live up to these promises, leads us to believe that your resolution may be a hollow political gesture. Finally, remember that your community members are not obligated to raise concerns about equity in a manner that is politically palatable or agreeable with the moods of individual county employees. Talking about racism, equity, money, and politics is uncomfortable and it may in times be uncomfortable for your staff. However, prioritizing comfort only protects the same practices and perpetuates these disparities. Please support your staff when things get uncomfortable. They will. But do not allow them to shy away from the important work simply because it is uncomfortable. Nothing we have shared with you or discussed during this process is meant to indict or lay blame on any specific elected official or staff member. Indeed, our entire point was doing this to illuminate the system that is much older than any of us and that we need to demand the attention and practice.
Thanks for your time, sir.
Thank you.
All right. And the last person that signed up is Ori Baber.
Good evening, Chair, members of the Commission. My name is Ori Baber. I'm a resident of downtown Asheville and a data scientist leading an 18-county study on property tax fairness in Western North Carolina. The following statement is entirely my own and not made on behalf of the Ad-Hoc Committee you will hear from later this evening. I'd like to share with you two simple numbers from the 2021 reassessment that helped me to grapple with the magnitude of the problems with our current property assessment system. First, we know that from a sample of less than 2,000 sold residential properties, about two percent of the housing stock, the assessed values were off by $106 million. Second, from a sample of less than 4,000 appealed residential properties, about four percent of the housing stock, assessed values were off by $173 million. Together, that's a $279 million discrepancy from less than six percent of our housing stock in just one year. The only reasonable next question for me, how does the property assessment system perform for the other 94 percent of the housing stock? Unfortunately, the Buncombe County Ad-Hoc Reappraisal Committee does not know. Why? Because staff chose not to share this information with the committee. Instead, staff chose to present this report, which is the inquiry into residential property assessment equity conducted by Tom Tavitt with Suniva Economics. This report is methodologically unsound, to the point where representatives from the International Association of Assessing Officers, the UNC School of Government, and the North Carolina Department of Revenue all agree this report can be taken as evidence of nothing, let alone equity in our property assessment system. Buncombe County Property Assessor Keith Miller, Assistant County Manager Civil Tate, and County Manager Avril Pender, and now this board, have all been informed that the methods of this report violate industry standards and yet your staff continue to push this as evidence of equity. I would like for you to consider asking your staff four simple questions. First, why they chose to present to the committee an evaluation of property assessment outcomes that has no relevance to the general housing stock. Two, why they insist that the findings of this report demonstrate equity. Three, why they chose not to present the findings of a uniformity study, which would have represented the entire housing stock and allowed the committee to make evidence-informed equity recommendations. And finally, what are the implications of a $279 million discrepancy from less than six percent of the housing stock? Who is burdened and who benefits? I think you and I know the answer to both of those questions and I wish staff had been transparent enough to communicate that with the committee. I have two requests. Please do not let this report stay on the record, amend it, or retract it entirely. Anything less is a disservice to our community. Two, please do not use the Buncombe County Ad-Hoc Reappraisal Committee as a template for how we address equity concerns in our community moving forward. Finally, I'd like to remind you that the Buncombe County Property Assessor is a position that is appointed by this board. Therefore, the responsibility to both support and hold this position accountable rests with this board. Thank you.
All right. That's everyone who signed up. Are there any other members of the public who wish to speak to your public comment? Okay, sure. Sure thing.
My name is Robert Elijah Thomas Jr. and I'm here to speak towards the reparations and the support thereof. This has been a very long time coming. Actually acknowledging the harms that have been previously done to an entire, you know, population of people in the U.S. I do appreciate you all for acknowledging it and starting the work here. But I don't think that the importance of the success of it is necessarily understood. Whereas reparations can potentially help fix the outcomes that we are currently living in within society. In this day and age, you know, we see the disparities in every system you can think of, from education, housing, economic mobility. All of these things are the outcomes of the discrimination massacres and specific exclusion of a community of individuals. And in order to fix it, we'll need specific attention to it. Attention that has been denied for the past denied for the past few hundred years, whereas I myself had to grow up and experience the harms that were the outcomes of, you know, discrimination and racism. You know, we're still in de facto segregation. Black people in Asheville live on islands segregated from the rest of the population in the community. We currently, you know, average income of a black mother in Asheville, North Carolina is $14,500 and some dollars, and without specific attention to address this situation, it won't move anywhere. You know, we have the ad hoc reappraisal situation with the tax inequities, and all of these things are the outcomes of what was previously done and is continuing to be done. And without specific attention, none of these things get addressed. You know, to me, it's all intersectional. It all correlates and it all plays together. But I do appreciate you all for being willing to consider to support, but it would take a lot more than, you know, money. It's gonna take resources, it's gonna take time, it's gonna take resources in the people capacity, staff, you know, they need data, community engagement. The community currently has not been a part of the process, and I'll leave it at that.
All right, thank you. All right. Is there someone else who'd like to address the board during public comment? Sure, come on up. Thank you.
Good evening, Commission members. My name is Tiffany Flunery-Debolo, and I wanted to come and just support the request from the county, for the Community Reparations Commission for ongoing funding. I myself currently sit on the commission regarding the education focus group, and we're not just looking at inadequacies just across the board in education or specific areas. We're looking at inadequacies across the board, period, from in the past, but now also moving into the future. My goal here tonight is not just to talk about reparations and what it will mean to Asheville, but my goal is to talk about what reparations will mean to our generations to come. If you consider continuously funding the community reparations project, you will see an opportunity where there is going to be a study and individuals will come together to create some policy change and recommendations that will be useful for this community. But this is a grand time. This is not just about Asheville. This is about our economy and our country as a whole. We're about to make history, and in my opinion, I would rather wake up on the side that is the right side, that right the wrongs that took place in the past. We may not have an opportunity to see the change right now, but we have an opportunity to make the change right now. And so I plead with you to continue to support and give us the foundation that's needed. Our job is not to divvy out money to the black community, no. Our job is to really prevent things from continuing to take place such as internalized racism, overt and covert racism, and different things that fall within the line of policy. We're talking on a city government level here, and I hope that you hear us, because we are the people and we stand for reparations. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, anyone else? Yes, please come on up.
My name is Levita Hill. I am a member of the Eastern Band of the Cherokee Indians. Thank you for allowing me to come to you to talk for just a little bit before you tonight because I have, or I'm planning to petition the U.S. Board on Geographic Names in order to change the mountain presently known as Klingman's Dome to Kwahhi. The name was Kwahhi before any settler came into our homeland. And Kwahhi is a very spiritual, cultural, significant place to me, but mainly to my ancestors. And what I'm doing is hopefully honoring our ancestors. I don't know how much you know about the Eastern Band of the Cherokee Indians or our history, but prior to the Trail of Tears, our people hid in those mountains. We hid in Kwahhi in order to stay here, in order to not go back or not be forced to Oklahoma. Some of our brothers and sisters were removed and now live in Oklahoma, but I'm a descendant of someone who actually hid in the mountains up in Kwahhi and were able to stay later on when the federal government said, okay, you can now return to an area known as the Kwahli Boundary. We've been pushing this out through social media, other news outlets have picked it up, we have received a ton of positive support, and for that, I'm so grateful. I feel like our ancestors are watching and they're proud of this moment, and I am here tonight to ask you for your support in this initiative as well. We will bring forward a, I'm not sure, like, an actual request, a more formal request, but tonight I'm just here to introduce myself and to introduce the initiative. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Thank you. And the Commission did have a brief discussion about the issue at our briefing meeting today, and we are planning to have that on the agenda at our next meeting, so thank you for being with us. Yep, great. All right, any other members of the public who wish to address the board?
Hi, I'm Jared Wheatley. I'm a citizen of the Cherokee Nation. I'm a resident of Asheville since 2009, a veteran of the United States Air Force, and the founder of the Indigenous Walls Project here in Asheville. I'm here to speak in support of Levita and her team pushing to rename Klingman's Dome, and I would like to share a personal story and the attachment that we have in the Cherokee Nation back here to our ancestral lands. My three times great-grandmother came from these mountains, and her and her children were relocated via the Trail of Tears and were survivors of the relocation to Oklahoma. Sometimes that feels like a long time ago that we were removed. However, my grandfather, who was born in 1934, was also a boarding school survivor. He was taken to boarding school when he was six years old and was beaten for speaking our language, and that language, when he left the reservation in Oklahoma, was not carried with him through his service in the United States Air Force, nor was it passed on to my mother, nor was it passed on to myself. The renaming of Klingman's Dome is important to us because it helps empower us and recognize that we've survived to this day and we continue to thrive in our local community and provide great service through our projects, our education, and our service directly to our country. We appreciate the support you've shown by bringing it to the next meeting as well.
All right, thank you. All right, any other members of the public wish to speak? All right. Thank you, I appreciate everyone who took time to come out to the meeting tonight and share your perspective. We appreciate it very much. All right. The next item on the agenda under good news is an update about the Buncombe County Special Olympics, and I think Lynn Pegg from Parks and Rec is here to present this item.
Thank you for having me here, and I want to start out by asking our Buncombe County Special Olympic Soccer Team to come up front, and, you know, they've had an exciting summer. Super. So as you all may or may not know, Buncombe County Recreation Services sponsors Buncombe County Special Olympics, which serves children and adults through Buncombe County with intellectual disabilities. At the 2022 Summer State Games this June, our athletes went to Raleigh and participated in state games, and the athletes earned 25 gold medals, six silver medals, five bronze medals, and four ribbons in swimming and gymnastics. Today, we're celebrating the accomplishments of these nine tremendous Buncombe County athletes who were not only selected to represent North Carolina in the USA Games in Florida along with 50 other states across the nation and the Caribbean Islands, but they brought home the silver medal in soccer. That's pretty exciting. So, thank you guys, thank you, yes. Well deserved, well deserved, right. So, the team is comprised of William Clark, Chris Copeland, Drew Copeland, Susanna Eversman, Andy Caroline Jackson, Alex Pot, Rob Powell, Elizabeth Pritchett, and Paige Soderman. And they're coached by Carla Fornari, who's with us, and Carolyn Bozenberg. This is great. So, and here today to accept this certificate of recognition signed by County Manager Pender and Board of Commission Chair is our Special Olympics Local Coordinator, Soccer Coach Carla Fornari from the silver medal winning Buncombe County Special Olympics Team. Thank you, everybody.
Great job, ready to go.
Yes. Hey, everyone, long time no see. Thanks for always supporting us for Buncombe County Special Olympics. These athletes worked really hard to accomplish all their goals, they worked really hard for Orlando, so again, we just thank you all for your support year round, all the time. Thank you.
Great job, great job. Yep, okay, and next up, we are gonna have a proclamation recognizing Parks and Recreation Month, and County Commissioner Terry Wells is gonna read the proclamation. Come on back up.
County of Buncombe proclamation, Parks and Recreation Month. Whereas parks and recreation are an integral part of communities throughout this country, including Buncombe County, and whereas parks and recreation promote health and wellness, improving the physical and mental health of people who utilize parks, and whereas through events like the Lake Julian Park Campout and kids fishing events, parks and recreation promote time spent in nature, which positively impacts mental health and well-being. And whereas the parks and recreation encourage physical activities by providing space for popular sports, hiking trails, swimming pools, greenways, and many other activities designed to promote active lifestyles, and whereas parks and recreation programs and events are critical to social interaction and enhance self-esteem, and whereas parks and natural recreation areas ensure the ecological beauty of our community and provide a place for children and adults to connect with nature and recreate outdoors. And whereas the U.S. House of Representatives has designated July as Parks and Recreation Month, and whereas Buncombe County offers river parks, sports complexes, natural areas for families and neighbors to gather, celebrate, and recreate, and whereas residents and visitors celebrate with Buncombe County Recreation Services each July and December with fireworks and Festival of Lights. And whereas Buncombe County proudly partners with the Special Olympics and celebrates our award-winning teams that competed recently at the state level, as well as our soccer team that earned the silver medal at the national competition, and whereas Buncombe County recognizes the benefits derived from parks and recreation resources. Now therefore, be it resolved, the Buncombe County Board of Commissioners recognize July as Parks and Recreation Month. Signed, Brownie Newman, Chairman, Buncombe County Board of Commissioners. And now Lynn, would you like to say something?
Thank you again, everybody, for having us here and recognizing Parks and Recreation in Buncombe County. Got a long way to go, but we're getting there, and with your support, we're gonna make Buncombe County Parks and Recreation the greatest in the state and in the nation. So, thank you.
The next item on the agenda is a presentation and updates from the Land of Sky Regional Council, and I believe that Nathan Ramsey is here to present this item. Great to see you, thanks for being with us.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Madam Manager. It's honored to be here on behalf of Land of Sky Regional Council to provide an update to you. If the slide presentation could be placed on the screen, and so, I know you've had a long meeting, and I will try to be as brief as possible, but before I get started, I want to recognize two of our staff who are with me today, Erica Anderson. Erica is Director of our Economic Community Development Team. So Erica, thank you for being here, and also one of our newer full-time employees, Brandon Priestor, who's a Business Services Representative focused on youth with the Mountain Area Workforce Development Board, and Brandon's here. Brandon previously was at AB Tech, so I appreciate them joining me here today. So, yeah, many of you know about Land of Sky, but for those that may not be as familiar, Land of Sky began in 1966. That was the same year that the Star Trek TV show debuted, so, you know, we are out of this world in many ways, and our team does great work. My jokes aren't too good, but I do the best I can, you know. I'm not gonna make a living in stand-up. So, 1966, Land of Sky got its beginnings. State legislation was passed in 1968, and then later in 1970 to recognize, in North Carolina, we have 16 regional councils, and in our region, that includes the counties that border the French Broad River, Transylvania, Henderson, Buncombe, and Madison. So to give you an overview of who we are, we're one of 16 across the state and over 500 across the nation, development organizations that help bring resources and provide support for the 20 local governments in our region, including Buncombe County. And we have many partnerships with Buncombe County, and we appreciate those collaborations, and we'll talk a little bit about that later on. Our mission is to provide regional solutions to relevant and emerging issues while providing a standard of excellence in delivery of federal, state, and local government services to our member communities. At the end of the day, we work for you. You're our boss, as are local governments, and we need to respond to what you need us to work on, so if we're doing things that we shouldn't be doing, you need to let us know, and if there's things that we need to focus on that we're not, you need to help give us some guidance there. I fail to acknowledge my board member who is here today, Commissioner Wells, so we're also thankful for her leadership. She's your representative on the Land of Sky Regional Council Board, and also Tim Love, who is her alternate, so we appreciate their representation. At Land of Sky, here's our commitment, that we focus on diversity, that we believe that treat all people with dignity, that we want to focus on high quality of culture of personal responsibility, but we also, you know, will engage in risk-taking when that's appropriate, but we respect the diversity of opinion throughout our region and internally, and we will implement and develop policies that are fair and consistent and equitable. So, how we're governed, we're governed by our board. So, how we're governed, we're governed by our Board of Elected Officials. So, our current Board Chair is Mayor Barbara Volk of the City of Hendersonville. Our upcoming Board Chair will be Mayor Patrick Fitzsimmons with the town of Weareville. Again, we appreciate Commissioner Wells' leadership as one of our Board of Delegates members. And so, the leadership of throughout our region. We have two executive board members from Buncombe County. That would be Mayor Fitzsimmons and Asheville City Council Member Sandra Kilgore. So, want to talk a little bit about how we're funded. So, about over 60% of our funding comes from federal sources. As you see, about 17% from state funding, local government contracts, private grants, in-kind, about 18%. And local dues account for 2%. So, our budget's about $20 million. And our local government dues that directly support Land of Sky are just under $200,000. And Buncombe County pays a large percentage of those local government dues. That doesn't account for the funding that you provide to support the French Broad Metropolitan Planning Organization. Our local governments are required to come up with a 20% match for their activities as well. So, your local government dues support that $20 million budgets. There is a typo there. So, for basically every dollar you commit, it has an impact of about $100 to the region directly through our budget, and really about 300 in funds that we leverage to our region. We have a balanced budget. The council's on a very solid financial position. I'm grateful for your support. One of the long-term challenges the council does have, and wants you to be aware of it, and I've shared this with the Board of Delegates, is our local dues really haven't increased in the last 20 years. Our match requirements have increased over that time. And so, about 78% of your local dues that you pay to Land of Sky go directly for matches for aging programs, our U.S. Department of Commerce Economic Development Administration programs, and the Appalachian Regional Commission programs. So, we are a lead economic development district for EDA and ARC, and we bring a lot of funding to western North Carolina, to our region, through those various programs. Erica, who I had introduced earlier, she helps oversee those programs through her department. The primary focus areas at Land of Sky, our largest program area is our Area Agency on Aging. That's about 40% of our budget and represents a large part of our staff. The Mountain Area Workforce Development Board also is a big part of what we do in addition to our Economic Community Development that Erica leads, as well as our transportation programs at Land of Sky. So, I serve as the Executive Director at Land of Sky and also the Director of the Mountain Area Workforce Development Board. We've worked hard over the last couple of years to reduce our costs, become more efficient. So, you know, we've reduced our operating costs by about $200,000 a year by lowering those ongoing expenses. Our finance team have done a great job. We have a tremendous amount of experience. We're, and our finance team are undergoing a transition. Our Deputy Director, not too long ago, was hired as the Executive Director of Foothills Commission, which is our neighboring council of government to our east, serving Rutherford, Polk, McDowell, and Cleveland Counties. And our Finance Director, who actually lives in Saluda and who commuted every day up I-26, is going to be joining Foothills. So, we have hired an interim Finance Director, and we're excited about that, Patricia Rosenberg. And she has served for about seven years as the Internal Auditor for the City of Asheville, in addition to some other private accounting roles. So, we're excited about that work and the work our finance team does. Our Area Agency on Aging, again, that's the biggest program we have. We all hopefully will support our older adults. I certainly am getting older, and that is true with our region, the state, and the nation. We are older, on average, than the state and the nation. And the programs that we oversee, you know, certainly through the pandemic, our Ombudsman Program did yeoman's work with, working with facilities throughout the county, throughout our region, you know, really the front lines when you're dealing with the pandemic. So, they oversee over 5,300 nursing home beds. And with our additional funding we received through the pandemic, actually that number, instead of 5 million, it's really over $8 million that they have helped leverage for the region. As I mentioned to you earlier, part of your local dues goes to that aging match. And they do a lot of things to try to limit the amount of your local funds that have to be matched. So, about 20,000, just under 20,000 of your local dues helps leverage a budget of eight and a half million dollars for our aging programs. And oftentimes, you may not see the programs we provide directly through Land of Sky, but they'll be through a Man of Food Bank, or Meals on Wheels, or Council on Aging, or other organizations that we have contracts with throughout the region. Again, as I mentioned, our aging profile in the region, we're older than the state and the nation. If you look at the growth in the 2020 census, most of that population was in our older adult population. We had very little growth in our region in the 18 and younger population. And that's really consistent with state and nationwide trends. And you can see the top leading causes of death in our region. And, you know, that, some of that is things that we can control by improving our health outcomes. So, if I would exercise more, eat healthy, those kinds of things, it would be beneficial to myself and our community. Our Economic Community Development Department really has the closest relationship with our local governments. So, we're providing a lot of technical assistance to support local governments throughout the region. So, they'll help with land use plans, zoning, technical assistance, just almost really a support for local governments where they may not have capacity internally to address those needs. You know, generally, Buncombe County is, y'all have a much larger organization than most of our local governments. So, you have a lot of that capacity internally. But we work really closely with your staff on a multitude of things. You know, our economic development programs, we're working closely with our economic developers in our region, trying to bring infrastructure dollars, broadband, water, sewer funds to the region to help support you. And then transportation planning, the MPO, the RPO, or Rural Planning Organization, you know, they work to help support transportation projects in the region. They're made up of elected officials throughout the region who are accountable for those projects. Just, I think, in just in the past year, there's something like $65 million in projects just in Buncombe County that the MPO is overseeing from a transportation. And that doesn't count, you know, projects like I-26 Connector and the I-26 projects that are much larger. So, if you look at the budgets for our Economic Community Development Department, your local dollars help support about $121,000 in match there. And so, and all that, that, those funds help leverage about $60 million to our region. So, not only were Land of Sky staff involved in that work, so we're not taking complete credit for that, but the work that our team did helped secure that. So, that may be, you know, a broadband project or an economic development project, you know, that expansion project that y'all are working with to secure those funds to help bring those to our region. And so, here's some examples of things that we use our local dues match. And so, you know, our local support for our governments to help them administer their ARPA funds. So, there's about eight or nine local, I think it's nine local governments now that we're administering either part or all their ARPA funds for them, helping them remain in compliance with federal, state requirements. You look at regional projects like the Western North Carolina Innovation Park, the Regional Chamber Business Collaboration through our comprehensive economic development strategy through the SEDs, our resilience work that we're helping support local governments become, you know, stronger to deal with increasing intensity of weather events in our region. So, you know, one takeaway from this presentation of, I would hope if you feel like the investment you make with Land of Sky, just the work of our ECD team, you would see a positive ROI for the county. Again, transportation programs through the French Broad MPO and our RPO, where, you know, those are processes that the public is to approve or not approve transportation projects. Our region has been really hit hard by the funding crunch that DOT has seen. So, there's some critical projects in Buncombe County that, you know, may not be in the 10-year plan. And so, there was some additional funding provided through the state budget that, over the next 10 years, will provide about $5 billion in additional funding for transportation projects. So, hopefully, some of those projects can be reprogrammed and be funded. The Workforce Board, many of you are familiar with the Workforce Board, but just like a lot of our other programs, a lot of the funds that we have through the Workforce Board go through our contracts. In Buncombe County, that's AB Tech and Goodwill. So, Goodwill serves our youth programs, that out-of-school youth aged 16 to 24. The AB Tech helps support our NC Works Career Center. It's located at 48 Grove Street in Buncombe County. And that's a partnership with the North Carolina Department of Commerce and AB Tech, as well as the Workforce Board. As you look at the employers that are represented on the Workforce Board, we have some of the leading employers in the region, some of our largest employers. We're also working with, I saw Commissioner Edwards earlier today, with My Future NC, trying to increase post-secondary credential attainment in our region. And our region is a pilot for that effort. We've received funding from the John and Belkendom out of Charlotte to do that. And it's through, and we appreciate Manager Pender and other representatives of Buncombe County for serving our P-20 council, trying to lead that work to increase post-secondary credential attainment aligned with the workforce needs in our region. So, I talked about our relationships with Buncombe County. We have contracts with Buncombe County to administer the Mountain Mobility Program and also to operate the non-emergency Medicaid Transportation Program. Those programs are, you know, serving thousands of Buncombe County residents every year. And we hope we're providing a high-quality level of service to the county and to the residents that we serve. A few things that we're doing additionally, we're working to establish a foreign trade zone in our region. That's work that's paid for through your local funds. Our region is one of the few parts of North Carolina not covered by a foreign trade zone, and that would give our economic developers and local communities one more tool in the toolbox when trying to help companies expand and grow here. One of the projects I'm most proud of at Land of Sky is led by Philip Cooper, who many of you know. It's our Inspire Program. It serves 11 counties in western North Carolina. It's funded by the grant from the Appalachian Regional Commission via Health and Dogwood Health Trust. It's helping support individuals who are coming through recovery, dealing with substance use disorders, and helping them with their recovery journey and connecting them with employment and helping them remain employed. And then finally, just our Healthy Opportunities Pilot. I may not have turned the slide when I should have. But our Healthy Opportunities Pilot, we're, Dogwood Health Trust was able to receive one of three pilots in North Carolina to manage the Medicaid population in a more holistic way. So, oftentimes, we pay for expensive healthcare procedures. But, you know, if someone maybe suffered from mold in their home and that caused a health condition, we would treat the health condition, but we would never fix the mold in their home. So, this Healthy Opportunities Pilot is dealing with really four focus areas of housing, transportation, food, and toxic stress. And Land of Sky is the lead on that project for the Healthy Opportunities Pilot. I hope I didn't take too much of your time. I'd be glad to answer any questions you have. Just appreciate the support from the county. And I know y'all have had a long meeting. So, just be willing to entertain any questions you may have.
Okay, great. Thanks, Nathan. Commissioners, any questions?
I don't have a question, but I just want to say thank you to Nathan and his team for all the great work they do. And they've definitely been integral to helping us with broadband here in Buncombe County. So, thank you for everything you do.
Well, thank you, Commissioner Wells, for your leadership. We're grateful, you know, we've seen a significant amount of work at the federal and state level to try to increase access to broadband. It's still, you know, a challenging effort. There's still many communities that are not served and many individuals that haven't been served. We're proud of our partnerships, working with Asheville Housing Authority, Buncombe County, City of Asheville, really in the digital inclusion, digital equity space. Also, working with rural communities, like in fire departments, community centers. Many of you know Sarah Nichols on our staff that helps lead that. And Sarah does a wonderful job, so. But, you know, please reach out to me anytime if you have any questions of me. Just one thing, and I probably spoke with, or had a conversation with Commissioner Wells and Tim Love a little earlier. And, you know, when we talk about dues changing, you know, we're not needing a dues change this year, next year, the year later. The proposal that I'd shared with our Board of Delegates was that at some point in time, we peg those dues to population increases. So, maybe they would adjust every five years. Because at some point in time, as our match requirements take a greater percentage of our local dues, that will reduce the flexibility of what we can do. But at the end of the day, that's a decision our local governments make. And if our local governments feel like, you know, that shouldn't change, that's certainly, you know, within your province to make that call. But again, we just hope we're, you know, we can prove to you that we're a good investment for your dollars. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Nathan. Thanks for being with us. Thanks for all the great work at Land of Sky. Okay. The next item on the agenda is a presentation from the Ad hoc Reappraisal Committee. And I believe, I'm not sure who's getting us started on this. I think there's several folks here. So, turn it over to y'all.
Good evening, Commissioners. Manager Pender, thank you so much for allowing us to be here tonight, providing you an update on our recommendations. But before I proceed, I'd like to take a minute to reflect on why we're here tonight. In September of last year, your board passed the resolution creating the Ad hoc Committee and establishing key objectives to the committee, that being to identify, is this presentation supposed to be going?
It's up, Bill.
It's up there. Okay. Let me move. Okay, there you go. To identify citizens' concerns, the guidance for future assessments, and to provide any input on equity concerns that have been addressed through those identification of those concerns. During tonight's, during tonight's presentation, we'll provide you with a high-level background on the activities of the committee since being created, and ultimately share with you our recommendations that are based on our learnings over the course of the time together, as well as the diverse backgrounds and perspectives that each- as well as the diverse backgrounds and perspectives that each of us brought to the committee. I'd like to introduce the rest of our committee, and then my fellow committee members will finish the presentation. Mr. Ori Baber, who you heard from earlier, was an at-large member. Sorry, I'm not doing this well. My apologies. This is Bobbitt Mays behind me, who's going to be one of our presenters. Mr. Dewayne McAfee, you heard earlier in public comment. Melanie Petrollo, who could not join us this evening. Debbie Lane, who serves on the Board of Equalization and Review. Miriam McKinney, as well, who serves on your Board of Equalization and Review. And Mr. Jonathan Hunter, who will also provide part of our presentation. And then we'll talk to you about how we got here. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Brenda.
I'm responsible for the slides, so if they don't move.
Good evening. My name is Bobbitt Mays, and I am new to this. I'm a community member, so I was not, I've learned a lot. I've learned a lot of how this system works. And so I appreciate the opportunity that I've had to be able to be on this forum and to give this presentation. And it's how we got to where we are today. First committee meeting was in November 2021. We had 14 committee meetings conducted. The meetings were virtual and in-person, with an emphasis on educating members to help enable us to understand more of the process. The educational activities included, but not limited to, offering public comments at meetings, administering a community survey and soliciting comments, engaging savator economics to conduct a study on the appraisal results, conducting an assessment process simulation exercise, review of the county's racial equity action plan, and hosting multiple guest speakers on a variety of topics. And I would like to include that Urban Three did come. First, they came as public comments, and the second time they came in and gave us a full presentation of what I think you've already seen. The guest speakers, we had six guest speakers and two staff presented information to the committee. And the sample topics discussed was property appraisal, mythology and standards, state law governing the property appraisal process, what government, local governments can and cannot do, history of black ownership in Buncombe County, the impact of public policy decisions and their negative outcomes for underserved populations, racial equity action plan overview, and an overview of the assessment process of Buncombe County. Now, addressing the resolution items, we had citizen concerns. We did conduct 1,200-plus respondents to a community survey, and 500 of them, 500-plus gave comments. Public comments during meetings allowed the committee to hear and understand the community's concerns. And I'm proud to say that Shiloh did come and gave their public comments. I have to give a shout out because they're listening, and they will call me on it. Provide guidance on future assessments. Recommendations developed by the committee provide guidance on enhancing the assessment process and provide input into equity concerns. Recommendations developed by the committee were done through an equity lens with county's equity analysis tools applied to each of the recommendations.
Thank you, Ms. Bobbitt. So I'm going to present the recommendation from the board. But first, once the committee felt that we were knowledgeable about the processes, statutes, as well as community and equity concerns, we began the process of developing our recommendations as a committee. The process began with an exercise to establish the committee's collective vision for the future. Once the visioning items were established, excuse me, the committee worked through several other exercises to arrive at the recommendations being presented tonight. The recommendation development process was very purposeful and structured to ensure that all voices were heard, all recommendations were considered, and most importantly, we had 100% participation from all committee members. It was very important to us is that we did get, in my understanding, in our last meeting, we did get 100% buy-in from all committee members. It's also important to note that the intent of the committee's recommendations are more strategic in nature with the county staff to provide specific plans and action items on how to achieve these particular recommendations. With all this in mind, let's get to the actual recommendations. And we've broken those up into four strategic directions. The first of which being to develop assessment policies to optimize tax revenue. So we felt as a committee that differentiating short-term rentals, investment and/or secondary home assessment approach, we would differentiate that between single-family houses used as primary residences. We understand, I'll get to the fact that we are going to have to have a focused lobbying effort in order to achieve this, because as we all know, this is not something that can be done currently. But as a committee, we were tasked with thinking outside the box and trying to come up with strategic ways in order to help the process. So, second item, allocate those, the short-term rental revenue that we just, I discussed before, to fund the HASS Homeowner Grant Program. And then, of course, I've already mentioned that we do need to focus lobbying efforts to increase revenue streams. We feel like that with some lobbying efforts in Raleigh, that we can change some of these things and we will see a return on investment because of those lobbying efforts. The second strategic direction, increase capacity in the Assessment Department. Develop process to correct the percentage of properties with incorrect attributes. As a committee, we felt like that that was one of the main driving forces with some of the assessed values, is that homeowners were not responding to the Assessment Department. If they had made improvements to their houses, they had finished a basement off, they had added a bathroom, potentially unpermitted work that had been done, and they weren't being reported, not only to the Building Department, but also to the Assessment Office. We also believe that increasing frequency of property reassessment would be a valuable tool. We think that instead of every four years, maybe drop that back to every two or three years. This gives the Assessment Department a chance. If we are in an appreciating market, it gives them a chance to try to get ahead of the curve and give a proper value to properties in Buncombe County. And then the last item under increased capacity for the department would be to develop key metrics that would trigger a staff increase so that the staff is not so spread thin, that they aren't able to conduct the business that we need them to at as residents of Buncombe County. The next strategic direction would be increase education and outreach. We feel like this is a very important piece to the process. As Ms. Bobbitt had mentioned, we did have a lot of public input. And we felt like as a committee that a lot of the public just simply does not understand, not only the assessment process, but also the appeals process and the way that assessments are mandated by professional organizations, but also by the state at large. So in order to increase education and outreach, we believe that we should leverage social media, faith-based organizations, and nonprofit organizations to engage and educate the community around the Assessment Department and the way that they conduct their business. Provide expert community ambassador to provide education on the appraisal process. To dive a little bit deeper into that, I consider that person as a liaison, somebody that would truly not just be a community outreach person first and then sort of come with some assessment or appraisal knowledge, but actually a person that is very skilled in assessment and appraisal terminology and the way that you conduct that business. And that way that they can go out into the community and try to explain that to folks and try to help with the appeals process potentially. I do feel like that on a personal level, that some folks don't want to feel like they have to call somebody in the Assessment Office that may not be an advocate for them if they are looking to contest their property value. So somebody that is knowledgeable in the assessment field, but then that can go out and meet the community where they are. Let's see, partner with local Board of Realtors to provide assistance and education with the assessment and/or appeal process. I think that we should tap, and I am a current member of the Board of Realtors in Asheville. I do feel like that that organization, I have not spoken to anybody there about this particular item, but I do feel like that that's an untapped resource for local folks that can potentially reach out to them, maybe with a partnership to say, hey, can you help me pull some comps in order to potentially appeal my assessed value on my home? And then the last item would be to reassess the limits on exemptions and to expand the eligibility and participation of the homeowners grant, excuse me, the homeowners grant program. We, as a committee, felt like that the income limits on that were very, very low. And there are folks specifically in our area that exceed that income level, but still do need homeowner assistance. And so that's something that we felt like as a committee would be very valuable, is to look at the income limits on that and at least reassess that. And then the last bullet-pointed item would be enhance permitting compliance. And this goes back to what I was saying earlier, that our committee felt like that a lot of these things were underreported or not reported at all. Partner with real estate professionals and builder association to ensure accurate property attributes are reported by homeowners. And we, as a committee, felt like that there has to be some kind of enforcement requirement around that. I don't think that you're going to get compliance without some kind of enforcement of that. And then, enhance internal processes for communication between the Assessment and the permitting department. And I know that there's a system in place already where those departments are speaking to each other. But obviously, we can always do a better job with trying to communicate better inter-departmentally, because we do feel like that that is a missed revenue stream because folks tend to not report all the things that they're doing to their homes that would increase their property value. I think, and we're going to open it up for discussion?
If there's some questions about these specific recommendations, we could, I mean, y'all don't want to go anywhere, but we could have questions now, and then there's some more presentation to give. But I did have one question about one of the recommendations. There's actually a couple of recommendations. But as it relates to the vacation rental properties and some of the other, well, there's vacation rental properties mentioned, investment properties, secondary homes. And the next steps identified are collaborating with county planning or legal, Department of Revenue to determine best policies. My sense from hearing some of the discussions around those different types of real estate is that there may be different approaches with each of those different sectors, right? Like when thinking about what might make sense for short-term rentals, that may be different than like second homes. There's, you know, all these different things are treated distinctly. Some of my specific, like, for example, like in North Carolina at the state level, I think it's pretty clear you can't tax second homes at a different rate than primary homes. South Carolina does it that way, but we don't do it that way. So that would really require like a state law change.
Yes.
But in regards to short-term rentals or vacation rental properties, one of the ideas I've heard talked about in this, you know, discussion is the idea that, you know, these are really commercial facilities now embedded within, you know, wherever they're located. So they ought to be thought about as an income-producing property, a commercial property, not just taxed as any other single-family home, if it's a single-family home. So my question is, I mean, I've heard some people argue that that's something that actually perhaps could be done consistent with existing state laws. Maybe that would be within the community's ability to do that now. So is that, my question is, is that the sense of the committee that that is something that could at least be looked at, potentially implemented, may not require state legislation?
Sure, yeah. And I don't know the answer to that. We did talk about the South Carolina taxing second homes differently than they do primary homes. If you've got, if you live in North Carolina and you have a vacation condo in Charleston, guess what? You're going to be taxed at a different rate in Charleston. So we did talk about that. We did talk about the investment properties that you had mentioned or short-term rentals. And we did feel like as a committee, and if I'm speaking out of term, please correct me, but we did feel like that those are run as a business and they're revenue-generating business. And so they should potentially be looked at to be taxed that way, yeah?
All right. Thank you for that clarification.
But I do want to say this, if it's feasible in South Carolina, and you, if you're able to lobby to the folks in Raleigh that it's an additional income stream for local municipalities, I don't know how you couldn't get buy-in on that. If there's a proven track record in a neighboring state, it would seem to me that you could put, somebody could put the numbers together to make it make sense from a ROI perspective. That's how, I mean, I tend to look at things from that perspective. And so it seems logical to me that you've got a case in point due south of where we are now.
No, I appreciate that, but it's helpful to understand what things might be within our local decision-making authority that could be acted on, and which ones would require that kind of additional state-level make the case, make the case for it.
And I don't want to beat this point up, but we, I think we talked many times about we're not going to limit ourselves in this environment to not make a recommendation because it can't be done tomorrow. We wanted to look at things in a, through a lens of a perfect scenario that makes sense for local residents here in Buncombe County.
Commissioners, any other questions? We'll have a chance to come back to the committee members. But any other questions for them at this point?
You know, one question I have that I would like answered.
Yes, sir.
If I think back when we started and set out with this Ad hoc Committee, one of the big questions was the disparity in the high-income homes, the taxes, versus the low-income homes, and specifically, you know, in the inner city. But did I miss this? Did you address that in the report?
So, in, well, these ladies did in their, it is, there's nothing in the recommendations per se that would address that. But that was certainly something that we did look at as a committee. And just off the cuff, when I, and I'm a real estate appraiser by trade. That's been licensed in North Carolina since 2004 or '05? And we did look at many reports from Buncombe County, also Tom Tavich's report, also Urban Three's reports. To answer your question, we can't, in my opinion, the Assessment Department can only use the data that's given to them. And so, for example, the Southside community in downtown Asheville was the fastest-growing percentage-wise of values over the last four years since they did the last reappraisal. That's a market condition. That is not something, in my opinion, as a real estate appraiser, that's not something that Keith's department can dictate. That's market activity. If you live in Southside or you live in Ms. Bobbitt's community of Shiloh, the market conditions are the market conditions. And if they, if your property has gone up 100%, that's a market condition where other folks are buying houses in the neighborhood. And you certainly have to use that data to come up with an assessed value. Does that, does that answer your question?
I think you've danced around it some, yes.
Okay.
And let me answer, let me explain something to you.
Okay.
Two things.
Okay.
One, I live in the Southside area.
Sure.
You know, and two, I spent 40 years in banking. So, you know, I'm sorry that it's not more specific in answering. not more specific in answering that question, but thanks.
Sure. And just to speak to your point, born and raised in Asheville, went to Vance Elementary, I think your wife was actually my art teacher in middle school. So, I'm certainly invested in Asheville and Buncombe County, and certainly have no need to be...
We've been here for six generations. So, I've been here a long time.
Sure. My family as well. So, I certainly appreciate that.
Okay.
Certainly, if these ladies want to answer that question, I don't know that I answered Mr. Whiteside's question.
I did want to say that we, you may not see it as a recommendation, but as we talked about the disparities, and we looked at how, especially in African-American communities or where houses, homes are now, let me see how I want to say that, homes were now bought for little of nothing, and then they get, they redo them, and then they flip them, and that causes everything else to go up. But in the process, the people that are living in the higher end, they're still not, when we looked at the rejection of Biltmore Forest compared to Shiloh, and what their taxes were, and we had to go through, we went through a whole process of doing a sample of how that's done, and about the three homes that are right there in that area, and how that dictates what that is. We did look at all of that process. And then, we look at where I live, where there are homes that may not, as we talked about, they're not saying when they've done, they haven't gotten permits to do things to their homes, to do more, to do more advances, and then people come in and buy them for little or nothing. An example would be, there was a home that was $150,000, and it was said that it could not be livable, it was not livable. And ugly houses came in, they bought it, and now they're getting ready to sell it for like $375. So, that one home is going to increase possibly the taxes on our homes around it, because it's just one simple house. Whereas Biltmore Forest, they're not redeveloping, they're staying the same. If that, does that help?
Thanks. This is where I wanted you to go. Appreciate it.
All right. I'm done.
And I guess, Commissioner, I guess just on, committee members, maybe just, and I guess one other related question. I mean, I, you know, the folks at Urban Three who kind of helped elevate some of these issues last year, you know, and you've heard the presentations from them, and there's a lot of different data and a lot of different points that I think they're seeking to make through the presentations. But the, if I had to pick just one takeaway from it, you know, it's this, their analysis indicating that there is some tendency to assess the more modest homes in the community at a higher rate above market value, and to under-assess the more high-end properties in the community below its actual market rate. I mean, going to the earlier point, you know, the state didn't set up this appraisal process in order to make it, you know, like a financially progressive system of taxation, right? It was set up to simply, if done, if done under the ideal, to simply accurately capture market values, and then everyone pays the same tax rate based on your relative property values. So, it's not meant to, as it's set up, to address things like gentrification and these kind of issues that we're concerned about in the community. But it's meant to be fair in that sense of everyone gets taxed the same relative to your true market value. But the Urban Three analysis indicates that that may not be happening, in that on the more modest homes, they're getting, they're getting assessed higher, and on the most higher-end homes, they're getting assessed lower. So, you know, and this is all a bunch of really technical math, right? So, that's part of the reason we wanted to have folks kind of take a deeper dive on this. It's not the kind of issue that, you know, we're going to have the bandwidth to like really dig into in county commission meetings with all these other issues on our agenda. So, and I know, so, Seneva did their analysis, looking at these issues in the county, and, you know, it's great when you have a community process, and by the, by the end of it, everyone has reached the same conclusion, right? So, maybe this is not going to be one of those times. But, but one of the things is, I was reviewing some of the information, kind of trying to get ready for this meeting, rereading some of Seneva's analysis, and there's a bunch in there, of course, and a lot of it's very technical. But one of the things, that on some points, they did seem to concur with Urban Three's analysis, and most notably, and one of the things that stood out to me, on the summary section of Seneva's document, it states, and this is, kind of goes into a little bit of emphasis in other areas of the county than maybe Urban Three was initially focused on, which is kind of more of these neighborhoods in Asheville. But I'll just read from it. On page six of the Seneva report, it states, "Among communities, Sandy Much had the highest percentage of over-assessed, of over-assessed sales." So, sales where the assessment did, you know, establish a value higher than market value. So, Sandy Much had the highest percentage of over-assessed values, followed by Ivy. Geographically, communities with higher percentages of over-assessed properties tend to be in the northern, more rural communities, with Biltmore State being the exception. But then, here was the kind of key sentence there. It said, "In general, over-assessed sales are more likely to be among the lowest-priced home sales," which seems like one of the key observations that came out of the Urban Three report. So, maybe they're not like fully aligned on all these different aspects of it, but that, that did stand out to me, is that is, that is one of our central concerns, is that we certainly do not want to be over-assessing the most modest homes in the community, which tend to be owned by people of the most modest means. So, anyway, just any comments you would have to share on that, that point?
The one thing, I'm not a real estate expert, commissioners, but what I can say is, I bought a, I own a condo in Buncombe County, and I'm probably telling on myself for the next reassessment, but my home was valued at $295. I got assessed at $243. So, the thing about it is, is appraisal from someone who can come in my home and look inside my home is a lot different than someone who cannot, right? So, they're going to see some things. And full disclosure, I just added things to my home. I pull permits, so nobody can come and get me. But we do have issues around people not pulling permits, construction happening inside the home that we do not know about, assessors are not allowed to go within homes. You know, I think the only thing that we'd do, would be to do, is to look at an analysis of what, and Keith is going to speak to a lot of the things that they're doing. And the other thing is, I just really cannot emphasize education. There was a person, there's a lot of public comment that we got during the survey, and one of those people had some concerns about their home. So, I called them up, connected them with the property office, because there was damage to their home that the property office did not know about. But they didn't know to tell them that, right? You're getting assessed on a perfectly fine home. They don't know there's a hole in your roof, or they don't know the basement has been flooded and is unusable. So, they were able to get some kind of remedy around that. And I cannot emphasize that enough. A continual evaluation of what we're doing in terms of appraisal, and getting people to come in and speak to that during the time that the reappraisal is happening, is going to be our best foot forward. That's what I have.
Jasmine, do you have a question or comment on this?
Are we going to do further discussion?
Yeah. We can come back to the committee members, too. I think Keith's going to share some of the staff recommendations in a second, too. Okay. All right. All right, Keith. Hey.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. So, I did have a few things that I wanted to add. I communicated this with the committee, that there was a few recommendations that I had that I would like to add and bring forth tonight, and which they were in agreement with. So, let me give you those, and I'm not sure if we're going to have those on the slide or not. But one of the things that came out of the survey is that the respondents to the survey, one of the issues that probably that were in the top five, were access to data, understanding what's on your website, how do we appeal, how do we get to an application, how do I see my picture of my home? You know, these are the type of things that we felt like, from those respondents, we were hearing that they were struggling with. So, one of my recommendations for you here this evening, which is related to the increase of education and outreach, is to, for me to work with our vendor on our website, to build a one-stop hub for our residents to go to, to where they find anything and everything they want to do. If you want to appeal, if you want to apply for an exemption, if you want to see a picture of your home, you want to see how much square fits in your home, any of these items are on one page, one click, that that, that person should be able to find easily and better understand it. So, I recommend that we work with our vendor to be able to accomplish that. The next couple of things are related to improving the data quality, and you've heard some mentions of that. That, two things that I'll bring forth there, that I'll recommend, is that first, we implement what we call an AI software, which is artificial intelligence. What the artificial intelligence offers us is this. It was said in one of our committee meetings once, and it stuck with me, and that is, to remove the bias from any situation, you have to remove the human. So, to remove any potential bias, to remove the human. So, what artificial intelligence gives us in this software, and which is already running in most of our larger counties in the state of North Carolina, it gives you an independent look at valuation of each individual property from completely a computer model. No human involved. It takes all the data that the computer can learn from sales transactions and data related to those sales, and produces a value for each property. And what that does for our appraisers, and what I think that does for us as a department, is gives us another tool and a way to look at valuation and take the human out of it. Did the, how did the valuation compare to what we do as the human compared to what that computer is telling us that it should be? It's an audit tool. It's another tool for our toolbox. It's another way to ensure that the system has no bias in it, because the computer can have no bias unless we teach the computer that. So, that's a recommendation that I have moving forward. The second one related to data quality is that we redelineate or reevaluate all of our market areas. We currently have about 2,500 unique market areas across the whole county, and these market areas are areas that we have defined that have something similar, and we have grouped them together. So, these market areas, mass appraisal, remember, we value groups of properties, not individual properties. So, these market areas help us better define that. We redefine and redelineate so many of those every reappraisal cycle, but to try and do 2,500 of them is almost impossible at some points, because of other things we have going on related to staffing. But this time, we need to do all 2,500. And I've assured people that we can do that, and that's another way that we can relook at these market areas to assure that they are being valued to similar properties and as we look at them as a group. So, that's my additional recommendations added to what the committee has presented to you. Also, quickly want to say that I thank the committee. They have worked very hard, many hours, that they've invested in this of their time, taken away from their families, their businesses, and their careers. And I thank them for that, for their dedication to this, to the residents of Buncombe County, and trying to present something that will help everyone. So, they have worked very hard. One thing, Commissioner, Chairman Newman, I will respond to your comment, is that, as you said, we all hope, when we get to the end, we all find common ground, and we all come to some kind of determination that we all agree upon. There has been a tremendous amount. And even working with Urban Three, Dr. Baber and I have agreed on most, all the issues, regardless of maybe what you continue to hear, that is a fact. Some of the difference that you see in the graphs, we did debate to show you here tonight, the differences in the graphs, and then we decided not to show them here to you tonight, because they become complex. And I can't explain to you exactly what's in the graphs in a few minutes. It takes time to sit down and really dive into them and understand them. But I think what you saw in the beginning, that I want to say, Chairman Newman, is the graphs that we saw in the beginning, this was some data of the Urban Three that used, that was as old as 2013, compared to the 2021 assessments, which produced something unusual that you saw. There is other graphs that we can look at, and we did come to those agreements with Urban Three, is that there's different ratios, and there's different graphs that we can look at that tell different stories. And what we looked at with the Seneva report mostly was evaluation of the appraisal model. Does the appraisal model work when you have correct data? And what we did agree upon with Urban Three is yes, it does. The appraisal model works. The methodology works, and the schedule values works when you have the correct data. When you don't have the correct data, and you start building graphs upon that, sales transactions that don't match necessarily the correct assessments, because the data's not correct, then it does start skewing the graphs, and it makes things look totally different. So, again, I don't want to get too technical in that to too deep, but to your comment, I think we did find a lot of common ground, and we did come to lots of agreement between us, myself and Mr. Baber, as we looked through the analysis. So, I think there was lots of success.
I didn't mean to indicate that there's not agreement on anything, but just, you know, I mean, not that, so it sounds like there was, but there's obviously some, you know, not everyone's on the exact same page, and that's, that's okay. I mean, that's, that's...
No. And, and yes, it's statistics, and it's numbers, and it's different ways of doing analysis. I do it one way, you do it one way. You see something, I see something. We all tell a different story with numbers, but we all have to get on the same page. And that's how, what we have really worked hard with Urban Three, is to get us all on the same page. We've spent hours and hours, they have sat in my conference room for hours and hours of us debating this data and trying to, both sides better understand it better. So, we have put a lot of effort and time into that. So, thank you.
All right. Commissioners, for the questions or comments?
I just want to say thank you to the committee, because certainly that was a commitment from you, and I was able to watch several. I didn't watch all the meetings, but watched several, and it is, thank you so much for your diligent work.
I'd like to echo that, and thank you, because you accomplished a lot in a short period of time, considering, you know, what I've seen in the past with some of the ad hoc committees with the county. But thanks a lot, and we appreciate the time that you put in it. And I think you broke it down to where even people like me can understand. So, thanks.
I'll further echo the, those words of praise, and also say thank you for looking at short-term, medium, and long-term goals to approach this as well. Thank you so much. This is really helpful. Appreciate y'all so much.
I'll express that same thanks, and also, just to all the committee members, this is a lot of hard work and staff, and also committee members and advocates. You know, this is, I think, as we think about what's happening in the lives of families across Buncombe County right now, and the years to come, this is one of the most pressing issues, and I hear about it every single place I go, one way or another, whether it's folks who are homeowners, or folks who are renters, feeling the pressures from this. I just want to kind of share a little bit about how I see our work ahead as folks in the policymaking position on this. You know, one thing we talked about last year, when we kind of teed this process up, and appointed the ad hoc committee, was that y'all would take this deep dive and come back to us with analysis and recommendations that could help inform our policymaking as we move forward. And that's really one key way I think about this, is that we have a market that is behaving in certain ways, and we know that there are inequities that result from that. And we have an appraisal process that is designed to do certain things, and kind of operates in that way. And our job as policymakers is, I think, to figure out both the front end and the mitigation strategies that can prevent as many inequities as possible, and then address any inequities that persist. I think we have made moves in that direction through things like the homeownership grant program to provide relief for people experiencing the burden of increased property taxes. I look forward to really digging into both the commission and, or the committee and the staff-level recommendations. You know, an idea we talked about last year, and again have revisited in our discussions this year so far, is are there ways that we can support more committee members in participating in the appeals process? I love the idea of a digital hub, and I also know many folks for whom it's going to take many more, much more participating in the appeals process. You know, you get a letter that has these numbers that kind of make your heart sink, and then what do you do next? And for a lot of people, I think we have to create some support and programs so that they can participate in that system that has been designed to mitigate that and to share... so that they can participate in that system that has been designed to mitigate that, and to share information that might address it. But I, I continue to feel like part of our job is to be very dogged about this question that Commissioner Whiteside raised, and that so many others have, which is, if there are inequities there, how do we do our very best to have a process that from the front end is preventing that from showing up on the backend? So I, you know, what that will look like as we move forward, I think, you know, that's our work to figure that out together. But hope that we can keep this front and center, certainly as we head into the, a new fiscal year in the months ahead. So just kind of wanted to sort of tee up some of the ways I'm thinking about where we go next now that we've received these, these recommendations.
Yes, I want to thank y'all for all the work. I know it's been tiresome and everything, but one thing I hadn't heard here that has been on my mind for a while, and I hear a lot from our constituents. So, you know, ugly homes is what they've said, or rundown homes that's been bought, and they're taxed like 160 or 180. How long is it before when that house is redined and then sold for, you know, 400,000? When does that go on to the tax record?
Well, when, when that house is sold, our staff reviews every sales transaction. So we see then, we review the condition related to that sales price. If that house then starts to be under construction as far as remodel, then we follow that. And we follow that building permit until completion, where it takes a year or where it takes two years in order to get to that point. Remember, assessment only happens once a year, January 1 of each year. So if you work on that house during the year for three or four months, and you're done and you're living in it, you won't realize the change in value until the following year, because you can't reassess in the middle of a year. It's all on one, and that's, that's some misunderstanding with a lot of our residents, too, is that what's done, why is the value not there? Well, state law does not allow me to put the value there until January 1 of the following year. So that's when that would occur.
Yes, the question I was really asking, if that whole house is bought by someone else, you, the owner did not remodel it, it was put on the market, it was sold, and then it was tripled in price whenever it sold from the 150 to the 450. That's still January 1, right? Is that the, the selling price, 450, does it go on to the taxes like that at 80% or whatever? Or how, exactly explain how that works.
What, was the sales price before the remodel or after? Before the remodel? Okay, then if there was no inaccurate data related to that house in our system, then the value will not change until a physical change has happened to the property. What the state law says is that the assessor can only revalue property in a non-revaluation year when two things occur, and that is a physical change to the property or a legal change to the property. Otherwise, the value has to stay the same until the next reappraisal.
So, so with, with that, Keith, so either a physical change or a legal change. So say that a property you, was assessed at 500,000, and then it, it sold for 800,000, just because of the way the market is. So when you see that that home's sold, then are you able to change that value come January?
No, not unless we find there was something physically changed to the property that the prior owner did not report to us.
Okay.
Okay, then we could revalue it. Otherwise, it would have to stay at that value until the next reappraisal.
So, so only if there's a physical change?
Correct.
So when you said if there's a legal change, what did you mean?
Typically zone in.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Right, um, one thing, maybe just for clarification, Keith, are the staff in agreement with all the committee recommendations? You made these additional recommendations, but I just wanted to clarify whether y'all see these recommendations as positive, or whether there's any differences there?
Yes, yes, we are in agreement, we see them positive, we see it's a great direction to move in. And we hope that we will receive your support on that.
Okay, I guess just going back to the.
We're not asking for a vote tonight, because I would like to get the details worked out and bring you back how we would move forward with some of those recommendations.
Sure, I don't, I wasn't thinking we would vote on it tonight, so don't worry. But just a few other comments, and yeah, but I'm glad we'll bring this back, so we have a chance to kind of process this a bit more, think about what we're hearing from the staff and the committee members. Couple other thoughts I would share there in terms of next steps. I mean, for some of the things, I'm, I'm glad this, I'm glad the committee looked at some things that, that would require state-level policy changes. It's harder, there's plenty of, you know, interest groups out there that would lobby against these kinds of changes. But there's also a lot of other communities like Buncombe County that are struggling with some of these same issues, and would probably be allies in the effort. So, so I think, I think, you know, our, our commission might be very open to endorsing some of those, and trying to encourage the county commissioner associations around the state to, to join us in working for some of those. But in the areas where we do actually have the authority to implement some of these measures, then I, I would, I would love to look at those as more short or medium-term opportunities, rather than, some of those are currently listed as like long-term opportunities, but we might be able to move on them faster. I'll also echo the support for what we can do to just kind of help make this process simpler for, you know, just, you know, like when we do the revaluations, you know, HCA is going to come in with a whole team of experts to advocate for, you know, negotiating the best they can get, right? And making this, making the best, the strongest arguments for, you know, how to get their taxes as low as they can. A lot of other bigger businesses, and, you know, and affluent individuals might have the time and bandwidth to do that. But a lot of folks just don't, right? They just don't, they're just out working, they're living their lives, juggling their stuff. So to the extent that we can make that process simpler, and I don't know, maybe even think about ways that we can, I mean, this is a process that we require everyone to go through who owns property in the county. So I just, I'd like for us to maybe think about what we can do to, you know, really support people who want to, who, who want to make, who, who might just have questions, in some cases they might want to make the case that, hey, I think I'm being overvalued. I think there, we might want to give some more proactive support to folks in the community to go through that process. And I'm not sure exactly what that looks like, but I'll just, I'll just echo support for exploring those kinds of ideas. All right, I guess those were the, those were the last points I wanted to make now. So Commissioners, other questions or comments at this time?
I think I'd only concur and lift up the, the idea of, yeah, moving some of those items where we do have authority under existing law, you know, to short-term or, or medium-term action items. And I guess I just also applaud the committee for their, their work and for looking into, you know, state-level policy changes. We have a lot of committees that we point people to that we create for various reasons. They don't always do that, and I really appreciate that. And it just kind of reminds, reminds me of, I guess, the idea that, that, you know, something like the second home tax situation that other states have, I think we should put together our own kind of legislative policy agenda related to housing affordability, related to affordability in general, that we can not only advocate in Raleigh for, but also bring to, to our community to show them what we think those changes need to be, so that they, they understand what they can vote for, and what they can advocate for themselves. And so I, I would just ask that we think about that as well.
All right, well, again, thanks to all the committee members and members of the public who participated, we appreciate it. I think, I think there's some good ideas here. And I'd also just say, I think this is the kind of thing that you're probably never really finished with. I mean, this is, this is, you know, this is a process, but I feel like there's, there's a real value that's coming out of this. So, you know, looking for ways to make this process better is something that you probably don't ever really get done with. But I'm glad we've spent time thinking about it, because it's the main way we raise revenue for, to fund local public services. So we want to do it in the, in the fairest and most accurate way we can.
Our ad hoc committee members may be saying, they're done.
Y'all, you're working, we, we, it wasn't, it is an ad hoc committee, right? So, so I don't mean for you all, I mean for our community, right? So you're, you're good, you're good. All right, okay, all right, well, all right, thanks for the updates, we appreciate it. Look forward to this coming back for further discussion for next steps.
And I will agree with Commissioner Salone. Now that we have a lobbyist in place, we are working on a legislative agenda process. So standby, there'll be more on how we develop that legislative agenda.
Absolutely, all right. The next item on our agenda is a public hearing for the, if I'm pronouncing it right, the Stack Drive rezoning request, and Nate Pennington is here to present this item.
Spot on in your pronunciation. Good afternoon, Chair, Commissioners, and members of the public. Let's wait till the presentation gets pulled up before we proceed. This is a rezoning request, let a couple people leave real quick. Okay, this is ZPH 2022-00016, known as the Stack Drive Zoning Map Amendment. Just to give you a brief overview, everything was advertised correctly legally, Citizen Times, notices sent out to property owners within 1,000 feet, and the property was physically posted. The applicant is here with us today, it's Mr. Ward Griffin. He's sitting behind me here in a moment with Grace Fund 1 LLC. The owner of the property is BLT Enterprises, location 19 Stack Drive. This is located off Charlotte Highway. This is an aerial image of the property. The property is 4.47 acres total area, current use is vacant. There is some residential in the area, it's sort of a mixed bag in this area. We'll talk about the surrounding community here in just a moment. Public water and sewer is available to the subject site. Current zoning of the properties are R1, as denoted in the yellow. The proposed zoning is Neighborhood Service. This is what the property would look like if it's, if it's rezoned, that's the sort of orangish color. Orange burnt sienna, whatever your palette so chooses. These are just an overview of the bulk standards of the property itself, the changes that, how they exist now with the R1 zoning as opposed to Neighborhood Service. Neighborhood Service is a transition zoning district, meaning it has some compatibility and doesn't allow for highly intense uses like the size of, say, an Ingalls. It does allow for some smaller scale Neighborhood Services, including but not limited, mixed-use medical clinics, banks, things of that nature. The maximum height is the same, and a lot of the standards are the same as well to sort of allow for that natural transition. This is an overview of what it, current site conditions, of what it looks like on the site. There has been some additional development on Charlotte Highway. The site is tucked behind the commercial corridor. There's an existing commercial strip center, Manufactured Home Park in the area. There's a residential neighborhood to the west of the subject property. The planning board reviewed this application on June the 20th, and they held a public hearing, and they voted unanimously to forward a recommendation of approval to the Board of Commissioners. Staff's recommendation is also approval of the rezoning request. And as I mentioned before, the applicant, Mr. Ward Griffin, is with us. And that concludes Staff's presentation, you will need to open up the public hearing. I'm here for any questions that you may have.
All right, if there's no questions now, let's open the public hearing at 7:25 PM. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak during the public hearing? All right, we'll close the public hearing at 7:26 PM. Commissioners, are there any questions about the proposed rezoning?
Sorry, Nate, the, the map I have doesn't have a legend. The R1 is yellow, and NS is the, like, flesh color?
Flesh color, that's a good one, too. Yes, that's correct, and let's, let's pull that back up just so we can look at it together again. Give me one second. So the yellow denotes the residential. Also studied the corridor, there are some variations in the depth to the, the commercial aspects. It sort of ebbs and flows as you make your way up and down Charlotte Highway. And let's just call it, the flesh color again does denote what the zoning district would look like if the R1 is changed. And that is a, we have a lot of mixed-use districts. We don't have a lot of pure-play zoning districts within the county, and those allow for a great deal of flexibility. But it does allow some smaller-scale commercial uses.
Hey Nate, would you remind us, how do you want the motion structured?
Glad you asked. So with 160D, it made things a little easier. We've baked in, you need to probably have a motion for the rezoning request, and within that, there's a zoning consistency. We've placed that within the same ordinance now, so it's either an ordinance to approve or a resolution to deny.
I will, I'm reading this correctly? Make a motion recommending approval of the proposed rezoning as presented.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thanks very much, thanks for being here.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, we have a public hearing regarding the FY 2023 Budget and Economic Development Appropriations. And I see Tim Love to help us get started on this one.
Good evening, Commissioners, no presentation this evening. You do have a request for board action before you, related to FY 23 budget items appropriations that have an economic development nature. Specifically, there are three grants that were approved in the strategic partnership grants process, as well as two in the economic development budget for economic development partners. Those were approved in the budget, so that is one step. However, statute requires that there's also a public hearing on any of these economic development appropriations, and so that's why we're here today. The items, and I'll, I'll read them out just so that they're in the record. But we have 17,500 for Carolina Small Business Development Fund, 47,500 for City Works USA, 52,000 for Mountain Bizworks, and those are the three strategic partnership grants. Related to our economic development partners, 45,000 for the Asheville-Buncombe Regional Sports Commission, $450,000 for the Asheville-Buncombe County Economic Development Coalition. So those are the five appropriations. This evening, we would ask the commission to have a public hearing on those items. However, prior to doing that, and Mr. Frew can walk us through, but there is a recr- recusal process necessary for any members of the board that sit on those boards for these items.
We're going to have one public hearing on all the items? Or do we need?
I think that would be fine, I mean, it would be my fault to go ahead and have the recusals done first, and then have votes for or against.
Okay, so we're gonna, we're gonna vote to recuse Commissioner Edwards from the Sports Commission, and Commissioner Whiteside's from the EDC, and we'll, we'll vote on those two items separately.
Yes.
And we'll, we can vote on the other three, and everyone may vote on those.
Then everyone can vote on the resolution as presented. That'd be just like we did with the budget a month ago. I mean, the statute allows, I mean, any, any commission member that is a board member of a nonprofit by a new statute, 143,234.3, must recuse themselves if they're on that board or involved with that appropriation.
So I'll make a motion to recuse Commissioner Edwards from voting on the Sports Commission item. Just for a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? I'll make a motion to recuse Commissioner Whiteside's from voting on the Economic Development Coalition appropriation.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so let's have a public hearing now. We'll open the public hearing at 7:31 PM, and this is for all of the economic development projects and organization appropriations that are listed on the agenda. Any members of the public wish to address the board during the public hearing? All right, I will close the public hearing at 7:32 PM. And so just stop me if I'm doing any of this wrong. I'll make a motion to approve the appropriations for Carolina Small Business Development Fund, City Works USA, and Mountain Bizworks, as listed in the staff report. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? I'll make a motion to approve the Asheville-Bunkham Sports Regional Commission funding, as indicated in the staff report, $45,000. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed? Okay, Commissioner Edwards did not vote on that matter. And then make a motion to approve the appropriation for the Economic Development Coalition of $450,000.
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, I think we got this taken care of. Great. Thanks, Tim. All right, thanks, Michael. Okay. We come to the county manager's report. Okay, very good. Under Old Business, we have the Community Reparations Commission update, and Rachel Edens is here to help us out with this item. Thanks for being with us.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. And so I would like to share with you all an update, pardon me, of where we are with the Community Reparations Commission. I know that this evening during public comment, we did hear a number of individuals from the community that shared some pieces, but I'd like to share with you all kind of where we are as a commission, where we've been over the past several months, and how the past four meetings have gone. So this evening, I'd like to cover just a few points with you all, primarily the commission project plan, an update on the staff project team, and let you all know who is working with us on that, an update on the impact focus areas and focus area work groups, a review of the commission activities, some major topics of interest, and looking ahead over the horizon with where we are. So before you see where we are, this is the current reparations project phases. I do want to point out that this is an updated project phase from what you all saw the last time. The key update here is Activity Four, which is immediate recommendations. That has a start date of the beginning of this fiscal year, July 1, and will end on October 1, 2022. The immediate recommendations phase has been added in an effort to be able to allow the commission to be able to share some more immediate recommendations even before the short-term recommendation phase ahead of November. This plan also does reflect a slightly shifted timeline that now projects our end date for the commission plan to be the middle of April 2024, and that shift is accounted by the addition of Activity Four. And these are the seven individuals from the county that are working on the project team. As you can see, we have a very robust team that, of staff resources, to ensure the successful support of the Community Reparations Commission. So our team reflects leadership across the county and has dedicated support across planning, strategy, communications, and of course administrative logistics. So our executive sponsor is Assistant County Manager DK Wesley. I serve as the county project team lead. Also, Rachel Nygaard, Tiffany Hanacho, Lillian Govis, Leonard Jones, and Lamar Joyner. In addition to the seven individuals, we also have some dedicated support for the impact focus area work groups. And so with this slide, I want to highlight that piece and then also give some updates on the impact focus areas and where you see. So I know that the font here is just a bit small, but this shows where we are with the current schedules that have been set for the impact focus area work groups. I do want to point out that rather than the way that the large group commission is streamed, these are in-person meetings only. They are taking place in the community, and you can see under the locations here where each of these will meet. The only one that hasn't been fully established yet is the Health and Wellness Committee, and I will give an update on where that location will be as soon as we have that. But you do see the scheduled meeting time here, and so in addition to Tiffany Hanacho and Rachel Nygaard, who are serving on the main project team, we also have Tim Love serving as our liaison for economic development, Ginger Cloud with Health and Wellness, and Matt Cable with Housing. The reason that we have these staff members from the county that are serving as liaisons and subject matter experts in addition to the five facilitation leads that are provided by the project team, Techquity, is that these individuals from Bunkham County have the relationship to our daily policies and processes and procedures, as well as specific knowledge of the data and analytics that might be needed by the work group members. So in order to be able to facilitate the smoothest provision of information and data that the work groups might need, we've established this system of having these five individuals be able to serve specifically for the work groups. And so again, the work group meetings are open to the public. They are in-person, and again, having them around the community is part of the commission's effort to be more embedded in the community and have increased community engagement. So these are our activities to date over the past four meetings. The first meeting was May 23. That meeting included an impact focus area initial breakout, so that was an opportunity for all of the commission members and alternates to be able to break out into their five impact focus areas. There is a schedule of the meetings that was approved at that meeting, and initial discussion and vote on long-term funding needs, which we'll get into a little bit more in-depth in just a moment. At the June 6 meeting, we had a review of the commission charge. We introduced meeting procedures. There was a considerable conversation around the request for more official youth engagement, and at that meeting, we also had a clarification of long-term funding requests to the city and county, and a motion was approved. And so I'll read for you here what the formal motion language is. It's the Community Reparations Commission recommends that the Bunkham County Board of Commissioners include a line item in their budget for reparations for Black people in Bunkham County as a percentage of the overall budget in perpetuity. So that language is included in the letter that was put forth to the Board of Commissioners, which is in your packet this evening. Additionally, at the June 27 meeting, there was a presentation of several youth engagement options, what that might look like, and then also a budget status update was given by myself and then also by Equity Inclusion Director Mills, who is here with the city this evening. And so we were able to share kind of where we are with our appropriations and allocations for the budget at that present time, and we heard what different options might look like as far as what the youth engagement options are. Those, it's three to four ideas, which ranged from having kind of a formal engagement as voting members to having liaisons with the youth in the community will be put forth to a global committee of the Reparations Commission, which would serve as sort of a steering committee. So all of those recommendations will be taken under consideration by a smaller group of the commission. And then last evening, July 18, we heard from reparations expert Dr. O'Najay Muid. Dr. Fatima Havis was not able to join us, but Dr. Muid provided information on multiple models of repair. He highlighted for us several models, and specifically including what it looks like in Evanston, Illinois, with the Housing Down Payment Assistance Program. And so Dr. Muid is the chair of INCOBR, which is the National Coalition of Black Americans for Reparations, and so that was the first subject matter expert that we've had, and we anticipate having several more over the next meetings in order to get to a more level set where we all can understand not only what different communities have done or have thought about doing, but what that might look like in the ways that are most specific to us here in Bunkham County. These are the three major topics of interest that have emerged thus far with the commission. Youth involvement options, which I mentioned just a bit earlier. There's definitely a desire to have the voice of youth that would be included in these conversations. Community engagement, and so one of the ways that we address community engagement through the Reparations Commission is to be able to house these work group meetings in the community, but we're continuing to look at what that looks like in order to have a more substantive and sustainable engagement option, including working with our community partners and continuing the work that was done in the very early phases of this commission, and also the city and county funding commitment. To the point of the commitment, this is the information that was shared by myself and Ms. Mills. So just as a recap, the city of Asheville's 2022 initial investment was $2.1 million. The FY 23 budget includes an additional appropriation of $500,000, and future city of Asheville budgets will include at least $500,000 annually to fund reparations. For us here in Bunkham County, there was $2 million allocated in FY 23, and the Board of Commissioners will consider subsequent appropriations annually as appropriate as part of the annual budget cycle. And I realize you might want to have some conversation about that, but there's some discussion slides at the end. Looking ahead, just to let you know what's next on the horizon for us, the next full commission meeting will be on Monday, August 15, from 6 to 8 at Harrah's Civic Center downtown. The immediate recommendations phase, Activity Four, will be coming to a close on October 1. And then there's the proposed reporting plan, which includes the pre-meeting agenda distribution when that is approved, a post-meeting action item distribution, which you all should have received by email this morning. And so that will be distributed to each of you after our meetings each month, and then I will come to you with a quarterly commission update, unless there is a need or request by you all for me to come and share something specific in between, or if something arises at a monthly meeting that needs to be shared. But other than that, those would be the three touchpoints. So the approved agenda, the post-meeting action items, and then my quarterly report. So if that is fine to proceed with you all, I would just ask that you acknowledge that a reporting structure is appropriate. And I will attempt to answer any questions that you have of me. Otherwise, that is, that's where we are from the last four meetings.
All right, great. Thanks, Rachel. All right, Commissioners, it's an opportunity for commission discussion. And we've, about any aspects of this, but of course, there was the request sent from the commission to us regarding seeking guidance around the commission's longer-term thoughts around investments in the Reparations Commission process. So I'll just open it up for commission discussion. I'm happy to jump in.
Yeah, just to get things going, just want to express appreciation to the community members and staff who are supporting this process. It is a big and very important lift, and just to kind of kick off the discussion, I look forward to hearing where the Commissioners are at. You know, we allocated $2 million in this year's budget, and in doing that, I really understood and supported that as a first step and many steps ahead, and that means creating a budget line through which we can continue to provide funding for the important work that will happen here. That's something we do with many of our most important priorities, whether it's expanding access to pre-K and early childhood education. We have, we didn't used to have a dedicated budget line. We now do, and that kind of helps anchor that year-to-year or affordable housing. And so I absolutely support there being an ongoing budget line around that. You know, look to the city of Asheville's leadership on establishing $500,000 as sort of a benchmark that carries year-over-year, but also understand that as this work moves forward, there may be times where we're getting strategic recommendations where the funding allocation would be a larger amount than that, for instance. But I certainly understand the many reasons why the commission wants to kind of have a clear foundation, at least, of what a starting point is in terms of what baseline funding would look like for those discussions. So just kind of sharing where I'm at in that process, really look forward to hearing where other people are, and hope we can get to being able to take a vote tonight if we're ready to do that.
Thanks, Jasmine.
I guess I will add a few different overlapping thoughts. You know, I was struck by all of the outreach we received, via phone and email about this, and was struck by the comments I heard tonight. I particularly will remember, imagine always, the comments we heard about just doing this, just setting this up. In addition to funding programs in the future, will give people hope and give future generations hope. I hadn't thought about this through that lens before. You know, I also just, like Commissioner Beach Farrar just said, we, in the last fiscal year, really without discussion, added funds, I think, for the first time ever for reparations, and did that again just last month for reparations, again, largely without debate, which I think is fantastic. I think what remains still is the hard question before us, which is what does reparations mean? What does it mean to our community? And what is the role of local government in addressing that issue? I think that's a challenge. It's a question that I don't even know where the start of the question is, really. And so I guess I just say that for the benefit of the community that's reached out to us and to the advocacy community out there, to not stop your advocacy and to think about the issue more broadly and to think about it, you know, through the lens of the definition of reparations and how we, you know, how we go forward, where we go from here, and to keep reaching out to us about, you know, with your thoughts and your ideas.
So I'll just share, I've been watching the various meetings, and I'm really glad that staff's working on the community, getting out in the community more, because that's something that I heard loud and clear from your meetings, that that was really important to you. And I'm also really looking forward to just seeing and hearing what comes out of those focus groups that you're gonna dig in there and really get into the meat of that work. And so, thanks, thank you all for your commitment to this and staff's commitment. And I'll also mention, I'm not sure if Michael was mentioned earlier, but I think Michael's been at every single meeting as well there. So it's, there's a lot of dedication, and I would agree with Commissioner Beach Farrar. I feel like with our commissioner strategic priorities, where we put that money to early childhood, education, affordable housing, I'm also supportive of that, and I think $500,000 is a good place to start with that. And I think it's really important for the health of our county as a whole, that we need to address inequities in order to ensure that everyone in our community has opportunities. And to me, this is about investing in wealth-building opportunities that address the racial disparities in education, housing, business ownership. And I believe that by doing this, that Bunkham County is going to be stronger for many generations. So thank you for your, for the work that you are about to do.
Let Commissioner Whitesides bring up the tail end of the conversation. First, I also want to thank the commission, Reparations Commission, for their work to date and the time invested, along with our county staff and city staff, who have worked tirelessly on this issue. I recently had a conversation with a native Ashevilleian, as we know, those are few and far between these days, a man of color, an entrepreneur, and we had a really fascinating conversation about reparations and what it means to him. And it has really resonated to me that he keeps saying, Amanda, as you all move forward in these decisions, think about generational wealth building and what has cost me and my family and my family's family because of the inequities that have occurred over time in Bunkham County. And every time now that we have these conversations, I hear him and his voice in the back of my head reminding me about what reparations means to him, and it was very poignant this evening to hear from Mr. McAfee as well, that what reparations means to him. And the conversation that I had back with my friend was, you know, it's important as a white person, as a white woman, that I may think I know what is best needed through reparations and through the Reparations Commission, but I don't. I don't have that lived experience, and that is why this Reparations Commission and the work that they bring forward and that you bring forward to us is so incredibly important, and that we are here to fully listen and to fully hear from each of you and the members of our community who have been so wrongfully impacted by systemic racism. So I'm really proud to support our decisions moving forward to fund reparations.
You're waiting till last, right, Al? Well, yeah, there's been a lot of work here, and I agree with you, Amanda. Reparation, we don't know what it actually means. I don't like the word reparation to start with. Is, I think we all should be able to prosper, but not being in them shoes, you just... prosper, but not being in them shoes, you just, it's hard to tell. You know, I know as myself, growing up, that, I mean, we lived in a little brick house, blockhouse, and was very poor. And, you know, as we went on and prospered, you know, we had help along the way, but it was a determination to want that. I want to help all kids of education. I want to help all kids of all colors. You know, we're talking about the Indian, the Cherokee Indians out there, what they went through, you know? We've all been through it. We have all been through it. And if, I don't know what the Indians went through, I don't know what the South Side went through over, I just remember back, you know, what my grandfather, we grew up on Burton Street. And my mama, you know, lived there her whole life, and we did not understand what the difference in color was, you know? I can remember the old hosiery mill there, and we all played, and we all had a good time, but it's like, this has come up, and I think it's time that we do something. But I have no more information on what it is, and also what a couple people said in public comment. We need to understand where this is going first, and what we can do before we just throw the money. And throughout my six years here as a commissioner, we have thrown a lot of projects out here and just put a little icing on it, just to say we done it. I'm very proud of what we've done with early childcare, was something that I was opposed to in the beginning of how much funding we was going to give them. But in three years, I see what we have done, Jasmine, Al, and the board as our commissioners and myself, and what else our committee has done. So right now, the committee has done a great job. I think everyone has worked real hard, but I would like to see this groundwork, make it prosper where we are doing something, instead of just, you know, dotting the i and crossing the t again. And, I mean, I'm very interested in listening to what Al's got to say, because I think that's our expert right there of what's going on, because he's been involved in everything. And me and Al talk a lot about this, you know, what's going on. So, Al, you beat me to being last, so it's your turn.
How much time do I have? I'd like to start by saying, I'm just sorry that my two supporters, who really pushed me since I was 15 years old, working in the community, are not here with us tonight. And that's my mom and dad, because they prepared me and my brother, my kids, all of us, for a world that when I came up in, I couldn't live in. You know, I couldn't be on the commission. I wouldn't have a building named after me at UNC Asheville. All of that is what's, you know, I've seen, but folks, it started when I was 15 years old here with A-School. Then when I went to college, I was arrested 14 times. I told mom and dad 10, but I lied about the other four. But that was for sit-ins. But that was all, I didn't realize then to prepare us for today, where we are. And when I look at what's going on with the reparations committee, and I see, you know, it might appear that they're trying to catch a greased pig, but they're not. It brings back memories for me in the 60s, where we were fighting with SNCC, the Black Panthers, the different organizations. And I was president of the student government at North Carolina College, and now North Carolina Central. And those were in the hot days, you know? But we got a lot done. But now, folks, we're at the intersection of yesterday, today, and tomorrow. And it's critical as a community, and this is not just to help the African-American community. This is going to make our whole community stronger, because we all know one thing, the old adage, what? A chain is only as strong as its weakest link. And this is something that we help, it will help us here. But I'm for the line item in the budget for the reparations committee, but I'm not for the line item from now on. I'm just for it until the committee ends its work. And let me tell you why I'm saying this. When we look at systemic racism, that should be across our budget. Every dollar we spend, whether it's housing, education, or whatever, because that affects all of us. And if we're going to do it and do it right, we can't set aside a line item just for the African-Americans and working on reparation. We've got to set aside to make sure that we eliminate systemic racism. And I hope this is what the committee looks at, to do everything, to help with education, criminal justice, all that we need. It's there. I mean, this is what concerns me, and this is what we need to work on. And two, it's just like athletes. You know, my granddad told me something years ago. We were talking about why it was back during Jackie Robinson and Willie Mays' time. And I was talking to granddad, and I said, boy, you know, all black players are like Superman, grandpa. And I remember he looked at me and he called me partner. He said, partner? No. The difference is, in sports, we all play by the same rules. But you know, and I know, that that's the only place that we sort of play by the same rules, because I question some of what happened to them after sports. But when you look in business, you look in education, you look in every other field, we have to fight for every inch of what we get. And folks, I'm not talking about what I've heard or what I've read. I'm talking about what I've gone through in my lifetime. And if we're going to level the playing field for everybody, and make America be the country that we brag about and we say it is, it's time for us to put up. Because we have shut up for the last 400 years, but it's time now. And we've got to do it the right way. And when we do it that way, it's not just going to strengthen one segment of the community, but it's going to help all of us. It's going to make this community stronger. It will help all of our kids, my grandkids, my great-grandkids. You know, it's not about me. I won't be here to see the end of it. But I sure hope that my daughters and grandboys are a part of it, just like your kids and grand, because this is what we're working for, for the long term of our community. And that's why I would, you know, like to see us, yeah, we can match what we do, the city is doing, but when we talk about perpetuity from now on, no. We should do it as long as needed, because we want to end this just like the Ad-Hoc Committee. It's going to take longer, but we want this to be successful, to strengthen our community, folks. And it's going to take patience, too, because, you know, this is like what we see in our democracy overall the day. Sometimes it's ugly. It'll look that way, but at the end of the day, hopefully, we'll be where we need to be. But I think it's, and it's time for us, as we go through this, to be open and honest with each other, and lay the cards on the table. I mean, the only way we'll get through this is we'll be open with the entire community. We all have got to sit around the table and deal with this. And that's why I hope, informing the committees, that you'll invite people from the total community to be part of the community of the committees, because we need to hear from them, too, not only just from African-Americans, because we're all in this together. And I agree with what you're doing with the kids. You know, bring them in as advisory or whatever, but I can tell you, from starting at 15, when I was young, though, it's one thing about it, to get some places where we need to go, you need life experiences. And unfortunately, some of the young people, they don't have it, what they need to be, you know, to look at that. But we need to listen to them, because whatever we do, they will be the ones who inherit it. So for me, you know, it's, it's been a long time coming, getting to this point. And, you know, a lot of people might disagree with me. I don't care. You know, it's been the story of my life, so I'm going to tell you what you want to hear and what you don't want to hear. And I think all of us should be that way. But, you know, as I said, I could go on and on, but I'm not. But I would like to make a motion that we match the city for $500,000 a year in our budget, as long as needed, for the reparations committee.
I'll second the motion. May I propose one additional detail to it? You know, with the early childhood education investments, which we started a few years ago, I think it was a good thing that we did. And of course, we bumped it up some, too.
Yeah, we did. We bumped it up every year.
To do things, but one of the things we, we did from the outset is we included a small percentage increase each year, just to account for inflation, because what 500,000 is worth today will not be the same thing, it won't be worth the same thing in five years or 10 years. So, so I think, I think the percentage change on early childhood is 2% per year. So I'd like to propose that we do this, we apply the same policy to the, to this investment as well. Is that, are you supportive of that, Commissioner Whitesides?
Yeah, I am. But remember, inflation, that was what time.
Well, this year is a bad one. It wasn't, we had the, you know, a couple of years ago, it was, it was actually very low, but that's way above that right now. But I know that's, that's, yeah, inflation levels are more, are certainly more than that now, but I think it's valuable for us to do something accounting for every year it is likely to go.
Yeah, I agree.
Hopefully, it settles down.
I'll accept that.
Okay. Great. So I'll just make a couple of comments, too. I appreciate everyone's thoughts on this and the work from the commissioners and the staff. And I, of course, support the, support the motion. And, you know, it's, I think, I think this, ever since we've started this conversation, you know, thinking about, well, when is the right time to make decisions around investments in it? It's not an easy question to answer, because it is still early in this process. We don't know what specific ideas are going to come out of it yet, right? So in a way, pledging funding to an idea where you haven't seen the specifics yet might make us a bit uncomfortable. But on the other hand, this commission is out, and they've been tasked with addressing some of the toughest issues that we face as a society, right? And so not having any guidance on what level of resources they might have to work with, I think would put them in a very tough position to even kind of begin thinking about, well, what, what sorts of things might we make as some of our highest priorities? So I think, I'm glad we invested in our budget this year, and I think giving some longer-term guidance as a starting point is hopefully going to be helpful to their work. And, and, you know, I think one of the other things that's hopefully going to be valuable about this process is that, you know, some of the speakers at the commission meeting tonight, I mean, just talk about the history of the community that this is all a part of. And I didn't grow up here, you know, I moved here in the, in 1990. And, but even for those of us who aren't from here, I mean, part of what I hope this process sparks is an interest in learning more about our history. How did we get to where we are? I mean, there's been a lot of discussion around the history of urban renewal in Asheville and Buncombe County, and how those decisions were made, and how neighborhoods were impacted. And I was just, you know, reading some of the documents around that, and in one of the, I think it was some students from UNCA who were working on this part of some of the documentaries that have been prepared around this, were talking about how, in one of the neighborhood plans for urban renewal, it was actually the county commissioners, it was the county government that actually developed and proposed the plans for that part of the city, even though I think the city ended up being more in the role of implementing parts of it. But, you know, our local governments did play an active role in making decisions that, and I don't think they were, you know, again, I wasn't here, but just from reading about it, listening to people who were part of it, I don't think all the people who made these decisions all meant to hurt everybody. I think in probably many ways, a lot of these decisions were made with good intentions. But certainly, when we look at them today, we know that if we could do it, we would do it really differently. And, but, but our local governments, you know, had a very direct role in creating the community that we live in today. And so I'm hoping we can play a practical and productive role in helping to remedy some of the things that we would all love to have been able to do differently, but we can do differently today. So I'm supportive of the recommendation, I appreciate the work of all the folks serving on the commission, and I look forward to, to learning more about the specific ideas that come forward for how we can help rebuild neighborhoods, rebuild homeownership, rebuild businesses that, that local governments contributed to, to hurting and, and losing in the past. So, got a motion in a second, further discussion?
Yeah, I want to say something else that, you know, has been on my mind there about how, how are things been? I've been here 62 years, so I grew up downtown, and like I said, right there next Burton Street. But one thing that has concerned me over the years is, whenever I first became a commissioner six years ago, what happened at Eagle Street? You know, redeveloped it and was fixing it up and everything, and the community that was there did not get to come back. You know, it got too, too expensive for them to come. And then three or four years ago, we'd done Lee Walker Heights and moved some out, but we're not bringing them back in. And I feel like there, we're kind of doing things the opposite of what we're talking about right now, is, you know, we promised that 50 or 70% would come back to Lee Walker Heights, and a beautiful place they're fixing there. And it's down to 20% now, so we're really talking one thing, but turning our head to another way, so.
Well, I would, I'd like to ask the staff to maybe, maybe get some more information on that. My understanding with the Lee Walker Heights redevelopment, the Maple Leaf, the new Maple Leaf Apartments, is that all of the residents were given an opportunity to return, and on the same financial, you know, at no higher, you know, rent rates than what they had before. But not all of them chose to, which is, I think, you know, that's actually a good thing, because folks have had a chance to, you know, they had a chance to, they got a voucher, had a chance to live somewhere else. And if some people decided, even though it is a great, I think it's a great-looking new development, if people decided, hey, I'd like to, I like the new place I've chosen, I like the neighborhood I've moved into, then I think folks having some of those options is good, too. But I think they all had the option to return. But let's have a bit, if the staff can take a look at that, and let's verify how that, because that was what was promised. So I'd like to make sure we know that that's true.
Yeah, it was promised. And what I'm hearing is it was promised, yes, they can come back, but I have not heard that, and I would like for staff to let us know. They come back at an affordable.
Right.
Not the cost they was paying. And also, I've had several that tell me that they are in a different complex, apartment or whatever, but been given a voucher to stay there at even a lower price, like, hey, we're paying you to get out of town here. So I'd like to have clarification on both of them.
Okay. Great.
And I know several who moved into individual homes, so, you know, they have, but I'd like to know that, too. That's good information.
Okay. All right. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, commissioners, thanks for the discussion, and Rachel, thanks for the great presentation and update. All right. Next up, we're moving to new business, and the first item is a request for an enterprise fund for Sheriff's, Sheriff's Office Real-Time Intelligence Center. And Lynn Smith, I see, is here. This is an item we've talked about before. This is an item we've talked about before. And there were a few questions which the sheriff's office has helped answer since this was on our agenda before. So.
Good evening. I'm not Lynn Smith, obviously. She's here. And she is welcome to come up if she wants to. My name's Herbert Blake. I'm the chief deputy for Sheriff Miller. He asked me to give a brief presentation and then the request for the enterprise funds. So if.
Sure. Great. Thanks for being here.
So as you guys know, an enterprise fund is a separate set of funds, not allocated through county government. And the sheriff is asking that you guys approve his request to establish a set of funds to support his real time intelligence center. This gives him the opportunity to manage it without repeatedly coming to the commissioners asking for financial support. So that's, in a nutshell, that is basically the request that he's asking. And he's asked me to represent him tonight and ask you to consider that request. And while you're thinking about it, I can also add that we, the Buncombe County Sheriff's Office was instrumental in helping the Asheville Police Department make arrests and/or identify suspects in the last two homicides in the city. So the real time intelligence center is being very effective and it's brought some value to the community.
And so one question, just for, make sure I'm understanding this correctly. The enterprise fund is this self-supporting fund where the sheriff's office is selling the service and so some private businesses who want to participate can sign up, participate, and they'd be, they would be charged a fee. And the fee is the source of the revenue for the enterprise fund. Do I have all this back straight?
One quick point to clarify.
If you're asking me, the answer is yes.
Okay. Thank you.
One point to clarify. The Board of Commissioners must, it's still an annually budgeted fund. So you must still set the budget. But to Chief Deputy's point, after you set the budget, it's up to the sheriff then to spend the funds. And the revenues come in directly to that fund.
Okay. And in terms of, so the estimated revenue in the presentation is $130,000. But that's, that's a forecasted amount, correct? So if, for whatever reason, let's just say it's somewhat less, there's somewhat less participation than forecasted and it's $100,000, that's raised through the fee for service, then the amount of revenue they would have would be $100,000. It's just whatever the system generates is what the revenue will be.
Yes, sir.
I'll make a motion to support the proposal.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thanks so much for being here. Appreciate it. All right. The next item under new business, child fatality prevention team, community child protection team, annual report and team member appointments. And Dr. Jennifer Mullenders here to present this item. Thanks for being here.
Good evening. Thanks for having me. So I'm here in my role as chair of the team. And I'm gonna go over some key points from the 2021 annual report. And then, as you said, ask for some requested appointments. So, let me get the slides up. Thank you. So some of this may be a review for those who've been on the board for a while. But the purpose of the North Carolina Child Fatality Prevention System is to enable development of a community-wide approach to child abuse and neglect, to understand the causes of childhood deaths in the state, to identify any gaps or deficiencies in service delivery that are impacting children and families, and to make and implement recommendations for laws, rules, or policies that can prevent future child abuse, neglect, and death. And so we have two teams here that have merged into one. So we have our Community Child Protection Team. And this team reviews selected active cases of children who are being served by child protective services. In all cases in which child, a child died as a result of suspected or confirmed abuse or neglect, and they had a report of abuse or neglect that had been made about the child or family to DSS within the prior 12, 12 months, or the child or family had been a recipient of child protective services within the prior 12 months. So we did not have any child fatalities related to abuse or neglect to review. And so what we reviewed instead were open DSS cases. And so we reviewed four open DSS cases in 2021. One focused on truancy, two involved intimate partner violence, and all four involved trauma and mental health needs of the children and/or their parents. And so these case reviews highlighted the complex struggles and decisions that are made by families, children, DSS social workers, community agencies, court systems during, you know, these, these situations. And team members offer recommendations to the DSS social workers to, about additional resources for children and families. The other part of the team is the Child Fatality Prevention Team. And so this team, this role of the team is to review the records of all additional deaths of children from birth to age 18. So those children who died as a, from a cause other than abuse or neglect. And it's important to note that fatalities are reviewed in the year after the child dies. So in 2021, we were reviewing deaths that occurred in 2020. And I'm going to share some data from those fatality reviews in a few slides. And so, you know, in our county, both of these teams are combined into one and that's, that's pretty common across the entire state. The role of the Board of Commissioners related to the local child fatality prevention team and Community Child Protection Team is to, one, receive the annual report of the team to advocate for any system improvements or needed resources if requested by the team. And then to appoint specific members to the local team as designated by state statute. And so the teams are made up of statutorily mandated private and, and public community agency representatives. So we have school system and law enforcement. You can see that in Appendix 1 of the, of the report, the variety of team members, multidisciplinary. And at the end of this presentation, I'm gonna be asking you to appoint some new members to our team. I will say that since I submitted the report back in May, we did fill the medical examiner role. So Paula Case is filling that role now, was appointed by the chief medical examiner of the state. But we do still have a vacancy and the seat that will be occupied by a parent of a child who died before the age of 18. As you can imagine, that's a pretty difficult role to fill. And many counties have vacancies in that role. We are grateful for the last individual who filled that role. And so we're gonna be working with community partners to see if we can identify a new candidate and then bring that to you in the future for approval, if successful. So now I'm just gonna go into some of the data from our child fatality reviews. So we reviewed 21 deaths of children who resided in Buncombe County at the time of their deaths in 2020. And this shows the different causes of death. And you can see the predominant causes of these fatalities were accidents, birth defects, and perinatal conditions like prematurity. The accidents were varied. We had a fatal injury from a firearm, drowning, and two infants who died from accidental suffocation and/or strangulation in bed. And I'll go into some additional specificity in a few slides. But in the report, we break down the fatalities by race, ethnicity, and gender. And so we had three black, non-Hispanic children who died, one white Hispanic child, and 17 white, non-Hispanic children. And by gender, eight females and 13 males. When we look at the ages, you can see that predominantly and very significantly, the majority of the fatalities were in infants, which, if you know anything about infant mortality, should not be surprising, right? This is, this is, you know, pretty standard for all counties in the state, for the state as a whole, and for the United States, right? And we know that infant mortality is one of the focus areas of our Community Health Improvement Plan that public health has to have. And so this just reinforces that. I will say that, as you'll see in this slide, you know, the predominant cause of, of those infant mortality, of the infant fatalities have to do with birth defects and perinatal conditions, right? So early, typically early in the, right after birth, right? So could have resulted from prematurity, could have resulted from placental abruption, separation of the placenta, which can decrease blood supply to the, to the baby. And those two at the end there, perinatal intestinal perforation and neonatal cerebral ischemia are all related to prematurity, right? So when a child is born, when a baby is born premature, they're just very vulnerable to a lot of harmful conditions that can, can lead to their death. And so I think that really, there, I mean, we're never going to get to a point where all babies can live, right? There's always, there's always the chance that from a chromosomal abnormality or some sort of medical problem. But there are things that we can do, right? So preconception health has been a big push. Prenatal health is important, but also being healthy before you get pregnant is really important. And so those are things that we, as a community, have tried to work on in the years and over the past years, and I think should look at continuing to, to address that. When the two deaths that are attributed to accidental suffocation and/or strangulation in bed happened out of state, and so we didn't, we weren't able to review records. So there is North Carolina statute that says a team can obtain records and, you know, providers have to release records for our review. But that, that doesn't carry over into other states. And so we were unsuccessful in obtaining those records despite attempts. But I would say, based on the cause of death, unsafe sleep environment was probably the cause. And as you see, we did have one, one fatality that was attributed to unsafe sleep environment. So infant fatalities by race and ethnicity, two were black, non-Hispanic. One was white Hispanic, and 13 were white, non-Hispanic. And it was seven females and nine males. And so, as I mentioned earlier, the teams are to identify system gaps or problems that might have contributed to a child's death and then make recommendations for changes to prevent similar deaths in the future. And so for the fatality that was a result of homicide, you know, in prior years, we've had other, other child fatalities related to homicide and we identified gun violence as a system problem that contributed to child fatalities. But during a presentation to the Justice Resource Advisory Council last year, you know, we got some feedback that, well, is gun violence really the problem? Or is that just a symptom of a problem, right? And, and so when we, we took that under consideration and when we were reviewing fatalities and specifically this fatality, we, we really dug a little deeper and identified systemic racism as the, as the problem that led to this individual's death. It was felt that during our review of the case, individuals in position of power and authority in our community had written off the child prior to their death, the kind of assuming outcome was inevitable. And we attributed that to systemic racism. And so we made this recommendation that local governmental agencies should require and invest in some sort of foundational racial equity training. So we specifically said racial equity institutes groundwater or training were equivalent for their staff. And in early June, I did share this recommendation in a memo to county manager and the county HHS board, the chief equity and human rights officer, justice services director, local police chiefs, the sheriff, school superintendents, and local town managers. And we know that agencies, like as a Buncombe County employee, I can say, I know that agencies are implementing staff trainings on racial equity. And our recommendation really focuses on showing that all staff are required to take this training so that they can gain a basic understanding of this critical issue. And it's our belief that through this foundational work, staff might be more receptive and engage in efforts to dismantle systemic racism and institute policies to permit racial equity. When we reviewed the fatality, it was related to sudden unexplained infant death and specifically unsafe sleep environment. Again, this is a, this is a common theme we see every year where caregivers place infants in unsafe sleep environments, often in, on a bed or in sleep areas with soft bedding and pillows. And that leads to preventable infant deaths. And so we have, we're, actually, next week, we'll have our initial meeting of our Buncombe County Safe Sleep Work Group, which we had in prior years. We're gonna look at current best practices. The American Academy of Pediatrics recently updated their, their guidance around safe sleep, really just reinforcing what they've said before about putting a baby back to sleep, but emphasizing that that should be in a firm, non-inclined surface to really room sharing, but not bed sharing, and avoiding soft bedding and overheating. And so we're gonna look at materials and work on a plan to get the messaging out through trusted community partners to try to prevent future deaths. And then Judge Ward Scotts was on our team. And he mentioned that, you know, judges are often, you know, who are overseeing custody cases, don't really know much about safe sleep. Like, he knows it because he's on their team. And so he reached out to the judge's school and is gonna educate judges about safe sleep education and encourage them to order safe sleep education for non-custodial parents. Again, trying to make sure that anybody who might have interaction with infants and be placing them to sleep is, understands the safest way to do that. And then for the fatality that was a suicide, the team identified a couple of problems. And so one was that child suicide is a growing issue in the country and that parents and caregivers may lack understanding of how to recognize and address suicidal thoughts in children. And so one recommendation was for the school systems and VIA and the Health and Human Services Agency to partner to share information on child suicide to parents. And so this occurred last fall and involved a press release, an online movie screening, and a social media campaign. And I, after that successful collaboration, I expect that that will happen again this year. And then the other issue that was identified was difficulty really in getting timely access to appropriate mental health services for children and how it's sometimes impossible to access those services. And so a couple of recommendations that came out of that involved really making sure that if a child is hospitalized for mental health issues, to really try to involve the school staff in that. You know, children spend most of their time at school. And so it's really important for school staff to know what's going on and helping connect those children to mental health services in the school. Of course, schools always need additional resources for mental health services. And then the other recommendation was related to considering how to maybe utilize VIA staff, like a suicide prevention expert, to really follow and assist with management of children who have a history of suicidal ideation. So these recommendations were shared with the hospital staff and with VIA, and they were taking those under consideration. So as I mentioned earlier, I'm gonna wrap up my presentation with requests for the board to take action on appointing some new members to the team. And so one of those members is a local law enforcement officer, which is a position where there is frequent turnover. And in fact, if you have a copy of the, of what was presented in the packet, you might notice there's a different name here for the Buncombe County Sheriff's Office Sergeant because there was turnover in the interim a few weeks that I submitted the packet. So the request tonight is to appoint Buncombe County Sergeant Caleb Hunter as the law enforcement officer to the team. And additionally, because of the frequent turnover in that, in law enforcement, I was, I would like the board to consider delegating the appointment of the local law enforcement officer to the sheriff so that as staff vacate positions or are reassigned, we don't have to come back to you and the sheriff can just appoint that essentially as your proxy. And then finally, several years ago, the board appointed a helpmate employee as one of the five additional members to the team. That employee left helpmate. And so the team would like you to officially appoint Chanel Young as the new helpmate representative to the team. And so that's all I have. And so if you have any questions or...
Just like to say thank you to you and other members of this group. It's certainly somber work that you all do, but so important. And just appreciate the reports and opportunities for us to try to keep our kids safer. So thank you.
Thank you.
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion. Can I do these, Michael, can I do these as one motion altogether?
Yes.
Okay. So I'll make a motion to appoint Sergeant Caleb Hunter. So I'll make a motion to appoint Sergeant Caleb Hunter as the law enforcement officer, Chanelle Young as the helpmate representative, and also delegate future appointments of the law enforcement officer to the county sheriff.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you so much for the presentation and good to see you. Okay. The next item is a budget amendment for grant awards, emergency watershed protection programs, stream flow rehabilitation assistance program, and tropical storm Fred, best management practices. John Hudson, Budget Director, will explain.
Good evening.
Good evening.
This budget amendment budgets three grants for agriculture and land resources. USDA with a match included by the State Division of Soil and Water Conservation provides a grant of $2,954,051 to clean debris from local waterways and stabilize stream banks at 44 different sites. The State Division is also granting $336,649 to remove debris from waterways to ensure drainage infrastructure. Lastly, the North Carolina Foundation for Soil and Water Conservation has allocated $7,916 to implement best land management practices on properties that were impacted by tropical storm Fred.
Motion to approve the budget amendment.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. And next up is a budget amendment for the FY21 Solar on Public Facilities.
So due to supply chain disruptions and increased costs of raw materials and shipping, procuring solar panels has become more expensive than originally budgeted. A budget increase on this capital project of $621,948 funded by utility rebates, investment earnings on bond proceeds is needed to ensure the completion of this project.
And the rebates are expected to cover the cost, but the rebates come in once they're installed. So these funds are needed so that they can be installed. Right. Okay. I make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. And last item under new business is approval of the COVID National Recovery Act funding.
Good evening, Commissioners. Sarah Joss here with Strategic Partnerships. And I know we've had a long night, so I'll try and make this as easy as possible. I am here to bring your attention once again to the COVID recovery funds. As a reminder, Buncombe County was allocated $50.7 million from U.S. Treasury. These are going to impacted areas of our community for COVID recovery. Little bit of where we're at with the request for proposals. We have now received our second tranche of funds and have held two rounds of requests for proposals. As you might remember from our first round, this process was open to nonprofits, public organizations, and county departments. And our second round RFP was released in March of this year and resulted in 105 submissions of applications requesting about $120.2 million. This is a nice rolling, reminder of our rolling awards to date. The total that we have allocated so far is about 27.9 million, and all of our current investments can be found on our website, www.buncomecounty.org/recoveryfunding. So this brings us to our proposed additional awards for the evening. You all have identified an additional $18.8 million in awards. That full number is $18,821, sorry, $18,821,666. And that will be across 24 projects, which would bring our total number of projects to 49. So I want to give a brief breakdown of our proposed awards by category first, and if you'd like, I can then walk through each organization on the list. So for affordable housing, we have $1,894,071. Aging and older adults, 125,000. For business support and economic development, we have 625,000. Environment and climate is 1,081,479. Homelessness is 3,144,000. Infrastructure and broadband at 5 million. K-12 education at 1,565,895. Mental health and substance use at 1,818,750, and workforce at 2,789. The organizations that we're looking at are Asheville Habitat for Humanity, Collaborativa La Milpa, Eblen Charities, The Ark of Buncombe County, Thrive Asheville, Meals on Wheels of Asheville and Buncombe County, Appalachian Sustainable Agriculture Project, Eagle Margaret Street Development Corporation. We've got the Buncombe County Government Offices of Sustainability, Loving Food Resources, Emergency Services within the county, Helpmate, Intergovernmental Relations within the county, YMI Cultural Center, United Way of Asheville and Buncombe County, YTL Training Program, All Souls Counseling Center, Justice Services within the county, Mountain Child Advocacy Center, Asheville Area Chamber of Commerce, Community Betterment Foundation, Human Resources within the county. And then we have two other county projects. One is going to be to replenish the COVID contingency project that we have held at $1 million, as well as an additional allocation for the second half of fund administration. So now we see the total awards to date since your first round of awards in August of 2021. And if you approve tonight's funding request, the county will have allocated a total of That leaves us with about 3.9 million remaining. Just a little recap of next steps if these awards are approved. We do have an annual performance plan that is due to treasury at the end of this month that we'll be submitting with progress for our first year of awards. We will also establish written agreements with all of the community partners and internal departments, and we'll be conducting ongoing monitoring for these projects. And then the plan is to revisit the remaining balance of these funds in 2023. So at this time, I would like you to consider the approval of the COVID-19 recovery funding awards as listed with a total of $18,821,821,666.
Ronnie, I'd like to make a motion to approve with a friendly amendment of the 3.9 million left over that we have remaining to go toward MSD expansion, Candler Sewer, with the exception if the state will match it with the county's or MSD's 2 million to go with it to make up the 10 million, making us somewhat about, you know, what, 70,000 short of exactly what we need, but.
All right, I don't hear a second for the motion. I make a motion that we approve the recommendations outlined in the staff report. Is there a second?
With the 3.9, have we got his staff or, and I know we're the ones doing it.
Is there a second? Just a moment, just a moment. Is there a second to the motion I made?
Second.
All right, there's a motion, a second on the table. Go ahead, Robert.
Oh, go ahead and vote.
And just to clarify that motion on the second table allocates the funds as outlined here, holds the 3.9 million for future allocation to be designated.
That's right. But I think from the process we went through, there was not majority support to invest in that project. So I, I mean, I think it's got a lot of merits. I'm happy to continue talking about it, but I don't think there was majority support to invest funds at that level at this time, so. Further discussion?
Well, it's late in the evening, but I'll very, very briefly just say thank you to the many community partners represented in this list of grantees. There's just extraordinary work happening in the community to respond to the ongoing impact of the pandemic. And also just lift up that there were many, many, many other compelling applications. This has not been an easy process any step of the way because of the strength of what our community is doing. So I just want to express that appreciation and to staff for facilitating a really robust process that at this point I think has been recognized nationally by National Association of County.
Counties.
Counties. Just counties. So real credit to county staff for, for developing and leading that process throughout.
Yes, and I'll just second that. And also, I look forward to us, I know it's too soon yet to really get reporting back from them because a year or less than a year isn't enough time, but I really look forward to getting some reporting of the outcome so that we can really see how these strategic investments have made a difference in the community.
One thing else I got to say on this is, you know, staff worked hard. We spent numerous hours doing this, and I think a lot of things are getting funded that we needed. But I guess what I'm upset about is we hired a lobbyist to go down to Raleigh to fight for our water quality of the French Broad River, Hominy Creek, Sunlow River. After what we've seen with Hurricane Fred of the sewer that was destroyed in the Candler area, and this sewer project's been wanting to go on for 10 years at least, that we've spent $46 million and could not match a state grant if it come through of $4 million. I mean, I'm very upset because, two things. We could clean the rivers up of what we're paying someone to be a lobbyist down in Raleigh with, and also it would be the only thing that we funded out of this $50 million that would repay for eternity, a lifetime of tax dollars coming in of developed land out there. So I'd like to ask one more time for a friendly amendment that we put this toward if the state can match it, they come up with it.
I guess I'll, I'll just add my, my comments similar to Commissioner Presley, what I, I don't recall where I was when I told you this a few days ago, in terms of my opinion on, on the application. You know, MSD applied through the ARPA grant application process through our first round and, and, you know, didn't gain support. And so just for that reason speaking personally, I, I was surprised to see they submitted the same exact, really stunned to see they submitted the same exact proposal again to us. You know, my thoughts on the project, it extends sewer to our county line, and I think that's, and that's a big deal that we should have a community discussion about. That's, that's a significant, to, to, to create the possibility of extending our county's sewer service, one of our most important pieces of infrastructure, to an entirely new community and new county without a public discussion, I think is, I think would be strange, if not reckless. I very much want to talk about this again, like Chairman Newman said, and, you know, on the campaign trail, and I continue to hear every day from folks in Candler that they want more sewer access. I think it's kind of, again, strange and perhaps reckless that there is no money, annual funding that goes into the expansion of sewer infrastructure. I think that's kind of, that's, that's something we should change as a society, as, as a government. You know, I think there's, there's a lot of places we could extend sewer to. Again, I think it's just, it's that, to me, in my eyes, it's that, that other end of the county that doesn't make sense to me when I think of other projects within our boundaries that may make more sense.
Well, on that, and I think if anyone from staff here would tell, that this studies went on for 10 years, that Candler is the number one for economic development out there, and that study's been going on 10 years. So I don't think, how do I say, no excuse not to do it. And also, this is one time, this is COVID relief money that we could use, that no tax increase to our constituents or nothing to use this money. And I think it'd be the wisest thing we've ever done for future tax dollars.
I think you make a good case. I do. I mean, and I genuinely open to continuing the conversation. My sense is just we went through this conversation. It is one of the projects that had the biggest price tag. It's, you know, it is a big project. We would need state funding. The state has not appropriated the matching funds yet. I think some of our legislators are supportive of it for the same reasons you're articulating, but they didn't get that done this year. So the matching, these matching funds don't exist. Maybe, 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 yeah, I know, but that'll be next year when the legislature goes back into session. So we've got some, we've got some time, I think, to kind of dig into this project more. I think sewer line extensions out in that part of the county do make sense. You know, I would like for us to kind of take a step back through the comp plan process and think about, you know, in the past, MSD hasn't really had a policy of proactively investing in sewer line extensions, and the county hasn't really had a policy of investing proactively in sewer line extensions. I, I agree. I think that should probably change if we're going to really try to shape growth and not just for, you know, manufacturing type projects, but to really kind of think about where, you know, growth is going to happen in the county, then I'm, I'm open to, I really am. But I just, it's, it's such a big project. I mean, part of my concern would be with the funds that are left over. I'm not really sure what you get for that amount that's left over, although, and although we didn't get to a point where necessarily we prepared to announce them tonight, there were, my, my sense is that there have been some other discussions about other things that might, there might also be potential interest in those funds for, too. So for those reasons, I'm, I'm not ready to support it out of, in that specific way, but I, I, I would be happy to have us back on the commission to talk about this for further, further discussion and potential investment from, from this group in the project.
Yeah, I guess to follow up on that, I mean, we've got till, what, 2025 to spend this money, right? Or 2024? 2024?
We have until 2024 to obligate the funds, and then 2026, the end of 2026, to spend them fully.
Right. And I, I mean, I guess what.
But that's a key point. 2026 is when they need to be spent.
Right.
Yeah.
The first thing is, I don't think we're going to get any more COVID money, so we're going to have to use tax dollars or something else or get it from Raleigh. If we don't use this, there is other projects that we can use it on if the state does not match this grant. So can we not just put it in there and say, hey, you know, here we are, we've done our part, now get with our legislature and get them to do it? And if it falls, then we put the 3.9 million back into accounts, you know, and use it for other projects, so.
That's not what the motion accomplishes. But I appreciate, I mean, I appreciate your advocacy for it. I mean, I, I genuinely, I genuinely do. I'll just, I'll make a, and I'm happy to, and I'd be happy to, you know, again, kind of consider, I think there's different ways to, to do that. I don't think this is the only way you could do a project like that. I personally just, kind of Commissioner Sloan, I feel like I would need some more information for a project of that financial magnitude to really make sure that, you know, whether it's this source of fund, this is all taxpayer money, whether it's Recovery Act funds or Buncombe County funds, that it's, you know, it's the best, it's, it's just well thought through compared to other potential infrastructure investments we could make. But I would just want to make a couple of comments about the, the investments we have here, the, I'd like to, you know, express. The, I'd like to, you know, express appreciation to all the community organizations. This was a very community-driven process to a large degree. Most of the proposals we're funding, some of them are for Buncombe County programs, like we're investing in expanding our community paramedics program. We're providing additional retention payments for Buncombe County employees who have served us so well over the past several years during a really tough time. And, but most of the, most of the proposals are, were community-generated proposals. And so we're investing in affordable housing. We're investing in expanding, providing shelter for members of our community who are dealing with domestic violence situations. We are investing additional millions of dollars in expanding rural broadband services to communities in our, throughout Buncombe County in a really well-thought-out proposal for how to do that. We're investing in preserving, you know, we talked about urban, you know, the history of urban renewal in our community. And one of the projects I'm glad we're voting on here is to protect one of the most historically valuable properties in Buncombe County that needs to be preserved for the future. So anyway, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a great set of projects that I really do think, I think when we started this process, we wanted to invest in things that we thought would make a meaningful and lasting difference in the front of, in the future of the community. And I think, I think these projects will, so... I appreciate everyone's work to get us here. Other questions or comments before we vote?
Well, I'm going to vote for it, because, I mean, there's a lot of hard work within this, but I'm disappointed we're not spending money that our taxpayers will not have to have a tax increase. And I just want to emphasize how much money this could bring back in the future of the development of the west end of our county, what it could clean up our creek, Hominy Creek, Swanlaw River, all of them, because it all runs downhill to the Woodfin area. And I'm disappointed, but I swear, I'm a businessman, and I look at, whenever I spend a lot of money, I want mine back in return. And this is the only one, I think, on here that actually pays dividends back, so... But I'm voting for it, and I hope that somewhere that Raleigh keeps printing money or Washington, and we can get another 4 million.
All right. Any other comments? All right, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. And there are unallocated funds, so this process is not completely finished yet, so... But this is a big step. So thanks for all the support from the staff. Really appreciate it. And we've got some board appointments. On the Homeless Initiative Advisory Committee, there's three appointments that are needed.
I will make a motion that we appoint Claire Hubbard, Marcus Laws, and Dustin Mailman.
Second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Oops, sorry. Got to turn the page over.
Yeah.
Started on the back. The Asheville-Buncombe Air Quality Board has one appointment.
I move to approve Ned Gutman.
Second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Health and Human Services Board, one reappointment.
I move to approve Daniel Frang.
Second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Economic Development Coalition has one appointment. I move to appoint Brian Gompers.
Second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Juvenile Crime Prevention Council has three appointments.
I move to appoint Don Johnson, Brittany Anderson, and Kokima Heinz. Second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Chairman.
Yes, sir.
On this economic development, what does that mean, not met requirements yet? Brian, that we just put...
That's a good question. Anybody have any commentary on that?
I don't see that on my...
It says it online, does not meet requirement.
What are we looking?
Does that mean he's not a healthcare executive?
That's what I'm wondering.
Oh.
Oh, it's for a specific role.
It's not meet requirement.
Okay, he applied for a spot that's got a specific... So this is a EDC position where...
Is it because that's a seat from the medical?
Or healthcare.
Okay.
It's healthcare, healthcare.
The other gentleman is in healthcare, so he...
Okay, well, I think we can't appoint someone that doesn't fit the criteria, so...
Do we need to do anything procedurally?
I'll, let's procedurally just rescind the previous motion. Can we do that, Michael? I made the motion, can I?
Reconsider.
Okay, I'd like to, could you suggest the language to, I'd make a motion to reconsider that appointment?
Yes, exactly.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All right, so now we can reconsider it.
I'll make a motion to appoint Gregory Lowe.
Second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
I'm sorry, was that a six, one?
Yes.
We have need for a closed session?
Yes, sir. Pursuant to 143, 318, 11A3 to discuss a legal matter with attorney employed by the county, need to discuss the matter of Ernst versus Buncombe County and industrial commission file number 21-731361. We need direction from the board.
Is there a motion to go into closed session?
Second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'm using everything.
Did everything good? I mean, you know, you think...